Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Welcome to the Guam Congress Building. Thank you for being here this morning. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order today's Thursday, May 16th, and the time is about 8:37 AM. I mean, sorry, 8:37 AM. Notice for the compliance with the open government law was published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Thursday, May 9th and Tuesday, May 14th, 2024. Notice was also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets, and this hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. I ask those testifying to please state your name for the record before speaking. There will be two hearings this morning, one at 8:30, one at 9:30. At 8:30, the agenda item is Bill Number 288-37 LS. A bill sponsored by myself, Theresa M. Terlahi, and Sabina Flores Perez. It's an act to amend section 75124 and 75122B5 of Chapter 75, Division 2, Title 21, and section 75A124 and 75A122B5 of Chapter 75A, Division 2, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the Chamor Land Trust Commission to secure infrastructure funding through the U.S. Department of Agriculture's substantially undeserved trust area initiative, utilizing proceeds from the Chamor Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund. So we will probably be referring to the U.S. Department of Agriculture as the USDA throughout this hearing and this substantially underserved trust area as SUDA program. At 9:30, will be a hearing on Bill Number 179. That is a bill sponsored by Joe S. Augustine and Roy A. B. Canata, Duane D. Sinicalis, and William A. Parkinson, an act to amend the Chamor Land Trust lease agreement with the Guam International Country Club Incorporated. All right, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleague Senator Roy Canata. Sisus Massey for being here, and Senator Telo Taitugui, thank you for being here this morning. All right, so we'll begin with Bill Number 288-37. I'm the primary sponsor, so I'll introduce it very briefly. This bill is pretty much to offer an option for the Chamor Land Trust to avail of these USDA substantially underserved trust area program funds to bring in water or wastewater or infrastructure, I mean waste disposal, infrastructure to Chamor Land Trust properties. It's common knowledge that this has really been one of the biggest issues facing the Chamor Land Trust, that while we have land to lease, if they're not able to put the infrastructure on it, then we are not going to end up with really livable conditions for anyone. So this is one of the goals of the land trust, is to make sure that these leases of land where they can live in really livable conditions. So what it does is it just includes as a use of the Chamor Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund that, in addition to subdivision, surveying, mapping, or registration of the land from using those funds, or the construction of the infrastructure for the roads, water, and power utilities, that it can also be used to include debt service required for financing secured through the U.S. Department of Agriculture substantially underserved trust area or SUDA initiative. And in addition to the annual lease fee established by 75108 of this chapter, the commission may recover from lessees the full cost of SUDA-funded investments which shall be prorated over the life of duly executed lease agreements, meaning in addition to the $1 that they pay for their lease, if infrastructure is brought on requiring a payment, then the Chamor Land Trust may recover those that are prorate that among each of the users of the property, or the lessees of the property. The bill also has a provision that says that distributes proceeds and says that no less than 50% of income arising out of any lease or license of properties declared in this subsection shall be credited annually to the Chamor Land Trust Survey Infrastructure Fund, and the remaining 50% shall be credited to the Chamor Home Loan Fund. This is a change from it originally saying that after 2020, all proceeds would be deposited to the Chamor Home Loan Fund. So now we're continuing to make it 50/50 in those two funds in order to pay back any obligation debt service we might have. All right, with that, I'm going to invite testimony from those who have signed up. I'll begin with those representatives from the Chamor Land Trust. Thank you for being here. Please, please come up and have a seat. All right, thank you. Joey? Is Joey here also? Joey, would you like also to... All right, so we'll begin with Chamor Land Trust Commission. I know we have the chairperson of the Chamor Land Trust Commission, Mr. Arlene Burdahlia. Thank you for being here.
Do you want me to start?
Please proceed, yes.
Good morning, Senator Terlahi. I am very happy for this bill to be publicly heard because this is one bill that would allow us to continue the work and, you know, building the infrastructure, providing survey cost. This would really help us as far as, you know, giving leases to our Chamor people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you fix all the mics right now? So... All right, Commissioner Herrera.
Good morning, Madam Speaker and Senator Roy Canata and Senator Telo Taitugui. My name is David Babauta Herrera. I am a commissioner for the Chamor Land Trust Commission. I started back in about February of 2022, 2023, and today now 2024. So I am present today to testify in favor of Bill Number 288-37, an act to amend subsections part of Chapter 75A relative to authorizing the Chamor Land Trust Commission to secure infrastructure funding through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Agriculture substantially underserved trust area, which is also known as the acronym SUDA Initiative, utilizing proceeds from the Chamor Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund. Just in a nutshell, I would like to request if we can show the visual that I requested on that PowerPoint.
Sure. Can we put that slide up, please? Not this one. All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Herrera, audio doesn't...
Okay, no problem.
We're gonna have a delay. Sorry on that.
No problem.
I know we sent it to them this morning, though.
Oh, so I can proceed without the...
Would you like to wait?
Oh, yeah.
Would you... Is it all right if I go to Joey and ask him if he has any testimony?
All right, okay, that's...
Or Joey? Is it... Are we ready? So Joey, would you like to proceed?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Senator Telo Taitugui and Senator Canata. Initially, we submitted a letter to your office that at this time the Chamor Land Trust would not provide testimony on Bill 288-37. The CLTC Board has yet to have the opportunity to discuss this bill. However, the CLTC Board will discuss it at their regularly scheduled board meeting on May 16, 2024, which is today, immediately after CLTC will provide a written testimony.
All right, thank you for that. And so I did receive that. So there is a meeting today. My apologies again, that was an oversight. I would not have scheduled it on the same day. All right. It's up to you, Mr. Herrera, if you'd like to proceed. And while we wait for the slides, yeah, we'll just wait.
If the slide is available, it's okay, I can wait.
Okay, here we go. All right, Mr. Herrera, please proceed.
Okay, on the slide, we have, I guess, the cover sheet. It's saying that the COTC bus was started. I use the analogy of a bus, of how the Chamor Land Trust came about, and it started back in 1974 when Senator Paul Burdahlia introduced the bill, and it became a public law 12-226. Then from there on, up until today, 2024, that was like 30 years of a timeline. We had 30 years to implement and apply what the visionary Senator Paul Burdahlia had back in 1995. And then today, we are here at 2024. And just in a nutshell, I noted public law 37-74 for the reason that... If we can go to the next slide, please, just to... Next slide. Here is the analogy that the Chamor Land Trust allegory would mention, that this is a 30-year-old vehicle that carries 10,000 applicants from the beginning in 1995 to today. There were 10,000 applicants that lined up in 1995, which is the first come, first served concept. So since 1995 to today, there's 2,900 applicants that have applied for the land trust. They were given leases to occupy the part of the 11,000 acres of property. Remember, 11,000 acres, 2,900 leases, and there were about 10,000 applicants. Now, the first come, first served methodology was that you serviced the first person that lined up in 95, which is December, then you go to number two, number three, number four. And based on my research, when I got in the land trust, I understood that the applicant process was stuck at number six. So I asked Mr. Joey Cruz, give me a background of number six. So number six applicant listed the grandchild as a beneficiary. Now, according to the public law 12-226 and the rules and regs, it did not include the grandchild as a beneficiary. So I'd like to thank the speaker here for introducing that bill that included or amended, and the body here amended and approved to include the grandchild. So that being said, right now, we can say that now at 2024, 30 years later, we can proceed from number six and start processing the other 8,000 or 10,000 applicants in the book. Now, how do we do that, right? And here's the logic when I came in, and this was so mysterious for me to analyze the situation, that you're stuck at number six with 10,000 applicants, but yet you have 2,900 leases. How did that happen? So again, I asked myself, how do we resolve such a problem? I'm saying it's a problem, but then some of the occupants that are here were given leases, which is good for them, but what happened to applicant number seven, on up to number nine, eight, nine, 10? So that being said, right, so since the bill was introduced and now it's a public law, so now we move on forward. The other project that I was looking into was that I understood that most of the properties of the 11,000 acres that were occupied by these 2,900 lessees were building sometimes a substandard home, sometimes non-standard at all, in reference to having the water and sewer disposed into the property, which is sometimes from the north aquifer or the southern part of the island. Now, that being said, right, we as commissioners, or at least myself, I'm trying to find out how do we resolve such a problem? So in a nutshell, the problem was that there was not enough government fundings to install hundreds and thousands of feet of water, power, and sewer, not mentioning the process to subdivide the property and subdivide it in accordance to the zoning requirements. So that being said, right, so now we kind of went one more step forward, and I double checked to verify how much does it cost to install an infrastructure. So for the north portion, of course, you need water, power, sewer, and that would be about $1 million a mile, roughly. So on the south, you can have properties subdivided down to half an acre or 929 water acre to put a water power septic and leaching field. So that being said, we were saying, okay, do we have any fundings that's enough to fund the infrastructure installation? And the answer is no. So the staff and management kind of provided me with one project that was started back in 2013 by the administration back then with Governor Eddie Calvum, and that was lot track number 10123. That's the lot right across the Jigoo Gym, and that portion of property was subdivided into 166 lots. So my next question is that, okay, so during that administration, it was subdivided into 166 lots and maybe about six commercial lots. So that being said, my next step was to find out what happened. So I was given the information that a request for proposal was submitted, but then that didn't catch any traction. So we, I went a step further and found out that they were trying to use the SUDA program back in 2013, the substantially underserved trust area. So I started to research about what the SUDA is, who is the regulatory agency that manages or administers that program, and it was the United States Department of Agriculture. So that being said, I dug deeper in to find out who, when, what, where, and why, and who are these agencies. So I found out that the USDA Rural Development Agency is right here in Guam, their subsidiary of the state USDA from Hawaii. So back in, after doing this research, a group came to Guam in the 13th of April. The two key persons from the USDA was the state representative, which is Chris Kanazawa, and the other key person was from Washington, DC, was Hakim Autoro. He's the administrator for the rural development. So we met up at University of Guam, and we asked some questions, and they were aware that in 2013, that program was introduced to the Chamor Land Trust. So that being said, from 2013, I was trying to track down what happened then. So in 2022, a request for interest was published by Department of Public Works, and Department of Public Works came back with a response that there was three to four contractors that submitted for the request for interest. So I have here in front of me the packet of the 166 lots. All the public hearing, it went through the Guam Land Use Commission, it went through the public process of rezoning from agriculture to residential, and we are here today. I'm trying to find the formula to get this program going using 166 as a prototype to apply the USDA rural or SUDA program. And again, fortunately, today, we have this bill, Number 288, that would kind of address this challenge that we have in front of us, and hopefully, and I have full confidence with the subject matter experts involved on the island, that this operation of having an additional funding source to improve the 11,000 acres and to provide infrastructure and homes for the 2,900 applicants and to process the 10,000, I mean, 2,900 lessees and the 10,000 applicants. So that being said, I again thank you, Madam Chair and Senators, for giving us your time this morning to address Bill Number 288. Thank you, and I'm here if you have any questions. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey. All right, we'll now hear from GWA, Mr. Budasi.
Morning, Speaker. Morning, Senator Taitugui, Senator Canata. My name is Chris Budasi. I'm the Assistant General Manager of Administration at the Guam Water Works Authority. I'm here on behalf of our general manager, Miguel Burdahlia, who couldn't be here this morning. We don't have written testimony to submit, but we will be submitting it after the hearing. I'm here today just to kind of provide a position statement on both bills and answer any questions that I can. So for Bill 288, GWA doesn't really have a position on the bill. Of course, we support any development that would bring new customers into the water system. We assume that any monies used from this program for any developments would result in infrastructure that would eventually be turned over to GWA, and in that sense, we would treat the CLTC like any other developer, and they would be, you know, required to meet any standards and our rules and regulations for any new developments.
Thank you. We also have Guam Housing. If I could ask you to come up, if you wouldn't, to provide testimony? I'm sorry, I'm gonna take these governmental entities, and then we'll hear from the rest, please. Please proceed.
Okay, good morning, Speaker. Okay, thank you. Good morning, Speaker, Terlahi, Senators Telo Taitugui and Senator Roy Canata. You know, Guam Housing Corporation actually assists the Chamor Land Trust lessees to get loans from Guam Housing. As we know today, we are the only agency that can provide loans to Chamor Land Trust lessees, aside from also the Veterans Affairs Administration. So we work collaboratively with Chamor Land Trust to get some, to get the list of applicants today that we can prequalify to get loans from us to build homes. We encourage these lessees to come forward, or if they do have an approved lease with Chamor Land Trust, to come to us. But I know there is a bureaucracy today, as we know, that they also need to submit plans if they do prequalify for a loan, and we are working again with Chamor Land Trust to make that happen. I know that also there was a law that was just passed recently, 3775, okay, and that also is to assist Chamor Land Trust with USDA loans. The, this body had approved supposedly a half a million dollars in escrow savings. So an MOU has not yet been finalized as a result. We're still trying to get the heads together to make that possible. We do know, and the board does know, that there is a lot of lessees, Chamor Land Trust lessees, that actually want a bill, but they just don't know probably the process of how to go about with that. So, but in any case, we are open to help anyone that's interested to come forward and build their homes with Chamor Land Trust property. So any questions? We, we're here to help. That's our goal. They can go to any conventional banks, as we know today.
Thank you very much. And did you state your name in the beginning?
I'm sorry. My name is Eda Pangolinan. I'm President Guam Housing Incorporated.
All right, and Patricia, did you want to also provide testimony? Please proceed.
Good morning, Speaker Terlahi, and Senators Taitugui and Canata. I just want to say that, as President Pangolinan had stated, you know, we are here to help, and one of the challenges that folks have faced has been the cost to install infrastructure. The issue that we have is that that cost can't be included in the mortgage because the appraisal does not include the infrastructure that needs to be installed up to the house. So let's say they have to put in five poles, you know, and I don't know what the cost is for that, but that cost is not included in terms of the appraisal value of the home. We can only, you know, the appraisers can only look at the site itself. So that's a challenge for folks. The same with the water system. So anything that can happen to assist folks with that cost so that they're not bearing that out of their own personal finances, that we definitely would support that. And again, you know, as President Pangolinan said, we are, we're here to help. We would love to walk folks through the process. Many of the lessees that have, you know, come into us have told us we didn't know that we could get financing. We thought we'd have to build it, you know, as Commissioner Herrera said, they've kind of dug into their own pockets and built whatever they could. So we definitely would like to continue to reach out and to work with the Chamor Land Trust Commission in getting that information out, to let people know that we are here, and we'd like to help them as much as possible. And I, sorry, I neglected to say who I was. I'm Patricia Kier. I'm the Special Assistant for Planning and Development.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kier. Can I just ask, so USDA, I mean, Guam Housing is currently working on an MOU with USDA, and this is for construction loans. and this is for construction loans, construction of houses? All right. And those do not include infrastructure costs?
That's right.
All right, thank you. Okay, Sidus Massey. Are there any other questions for this panel right now before we hear from the others? Okay, Senator Tidigui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues. Of course, good morning to everyone here from Chamorland Trust and of course, Waterworks and Guam Housing. It was said earlier by Mr. Herrera about it's costing about 1 million a mile for this infrastructure, and I just wanted to check with Chris Budasi, is that the, is that a true amount? Is that what we're looking at per infrastructure as far as sewer is concerned?
Yeah. I'm not sure what the actual numbers are for our projects at this time. There's been a really large escalation in cost to build over the last several years. So that would be something I'd have to go back and talk to our engineers about and see if I can get those numbers. As far as linear feet, generally it's costed out by linear foot as far as installing sewer lines or water lines. So I can, I can try to get that information and then we can convert it into something that can be compared to those numbers.
Can you give me a guesstimate? I mean, if you're talking about something that happened a couple of years ago that you're aware of, but you know, the escalation in prices going up, what was it before then?
So five years ago, water lines were maybe 300 dollars per linear foot.
Okay, so linear foot, can you help me out there? Is that, is that what, one foot, two foot, three foot linear, what is, what amount is that?
Yeah, I'm sorry Senator, I'm not, that's not my wheelhouse. I'd have to go back and talk to the engineers and we can, we can get that information.
Okay, I'm going to Google it then. Best thing to do is Google it. So 300 dollars per linear foot, right?
That would be like five years ago.
Okay. And Edith, how many loans has Guam Housing Corporation awarded for Chamorland Trust leases so far?
Okay, as of today's date, we were up to 42, but I think we, some of them have paid off their loans, like maybe a few of that.
Forty-two?
Forty-two only.
Okay, then how do you explain the 100 and, well, if I'm not mistaken, it was 29,000 that has already been, as Mr. Herrera was saying, that out of the 11,000, 10,000 applicants, about 2,900 have been given leases. And of that 200, 2,900, if I'm not mistaken, I'm aware of 129 that have built, actually built infrastructure. So the reason why I'm asking Edith is because, you know, so they must have gone somewhere else other than Guam Housing Corporation to seek a loan to build their, their homes, correct?
As of our records, Madam Senator, there's only forty-some today that have come forward with us.
Since 1995?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Herrera, did you want to say something? Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Out of the 100 plus, when I got on board, I requested from Mr. Joey Cruz to review the packets of everybody that has built. And majority of them were from the prior Small Business Administration home loans during disaster. And I requested for that data and to look into the files to identify at that time because we had about maybe 20, 25 that were applying for the Mauar disaster. So out of the Mauar disaster, we were trying to find fundings to guarantee the loan, which is now up to 200, 240K per applicant. So the question is-
But does that include the infrastructure?
Well, some of them.
Some of them, for Mauar, the relief?
Yes, because, again, because of the north and south configuration, right? On the north, normally you have sewer line, but if there's no sewer, you're required to have a septic leaching field. But your land mass area has to be larger.
Half an acre, yes.
Right, yes.
Understand.
But that being said, we found out that a lot of the occupants sometimes build a home and do the outhouse concept. Outhouse concept is the communism, no? You just dig a hole and put a roof.
Well, I think that's not environmentally-
No, but the fact, we're telling the truth. And the truth is, we need the truth to find and resolve the issues.
Okay.
And of course, I agree with your concept that it's not environmentally-
No, it's not. And I think it's, it's not even permitted, if I'm not mistaken.
On the north, on the south.
So I'm showing only 125 so far has, have built homes. On that 2,900 leases that are awarded to individuals, only 125 out of that 2,900. So there is a huge, huge issue here. And, and I mean, it's bluntly in our face. So this bill, I mean, I totally support it, you know, and anything we can to, to bring the infrastructure. So I guess we're going to have to get into rules and regulations when you have your meeting today. And thank you so much for being here to testify, kind of gives us a, a gauge at some of the board members, how they feel about this bill, which it's, to me, it's no brainer. It's an opportunity for us to get this infrastructure through. Now the next question is, who will be able to avail themselves of this funding? Which pieces of property? And, you know, is it the first come, first served to avail themselves of the infrastructure? You're going back to like those 125 applicants from Chamorland Trust to actually, you know, already put their infrastructure, because it's going to be quite substantially lower for them. What is the interest rate that you're going to try, charge the leasing, if anything? So there, there's a lot of variables here. So I'm looking forward to how the rules and regulations are going to be put together to allow, I'm pretty sure the program itself has some guidelines. But, you know, just like, had we issues before, which more land trusts first come, first serve? There are going to have to be, you know, limitations as well as, you know, allowances as we move forward. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to that. So thank you, thank you so much, and looking forward to hearing what you guys have to say, your testimony. Of course, Waterworks, I'd like to find out what that going rate is, if that was five years ago at 300, you know? Okay, thank you.
Thank you Senator. Senator Kenata?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Sidus Massey, for all of you guys being present today here. I know you guys have busy schedules and certainly very excited to hear what the board meeting will have today. Do you guys have legal counsel yet?
Today, Assistant Attorney General Miller will be present at our board meeting.
So hopefully, some of your matters on your agenda will be resolved. The lease payments for tenants, right? Where does that money go to?
Currently, since the creation of the CLTC Survey and Infrastructure Fund, the lease payments go to that fund as of today, or currently.
What about commercial leasing?
For commercial leases executed prior to October 2015, those revenues go to the Chamorland Trust Operations Fund. For commercial leases executed after October 2015, those revenues now go to the Chamorland Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund.
How much do you have available in your infrastructure funding?
If you're talking-
Guesstimate.
If you're, if you're talking green cash, hard money in the bank, it's a very minimal amount.
Thousand?
Maybe a little higher.
Ten thousand?
Maybe within that range. That's due to, because if we all remember in 2017, Chamorland Trust had written off a bad debt, meaning the government of Guam or the collections wasn't being remitted to the Chamorland Trust Commission Survey and Infrastructure Fund. So what it is, is we record it as a receivable, but we do recognize it as revenue, but there is no actual green money in the bank at that time. I don't recall what the receivable amount is as of September 30, 2022, as we are just wrapping up our audit for that fiscal year, but we can provide that amount.
Okay, thank you. One more question for you. I believe in, we had a committee in the hall a while back and you were, you know, the director wasn't available and of course, you're second in command. So you stated on a committee in the hall when we were having Bill 107 reviewed, you stated that Suta was, was available, but was not successful. Can you advise us what the situation was at that time and where the ball was dropped? Or what recommendations can you give us, the committee, to help this program prevail at the end of the day, right?
The Suta has been a program that has been looked at for many years. If I'm not mistaken, even upon the, under the direction of Mr. Joe Borja, going forward, during the, under the direction of Jack Haddock, Mike Borja. From what we understood was, the grant part of the Suta funding is not 100%. There'll be an aspect of grant funding and also loan. What we were trying to figure out is how, or what, what funding source we can identify or securitize that would, that would pay back the loan. But nonetheless, we also have, also worked with a nonprofit group from Hawaii called RCAC, and they're assisting us in exploring other supplemental funding avenues where we can avail of to, to fund the installation of infrastructure. Like Commissioner Herrera had mentioned, there's Track 10123 that was, that was looked at in regards to using the Suta funding with, while working with RCAC, we also had decided to use Track 1022 as a pilot project. The reason why 1022 was decided is because initially that, that tracker property was subdivided for the land, for the landless program with the intention of installing sewer. So those lots were cut up to about 474 square meters, which is unusable. For one, because of the lot size, and two, because where it's situated, in Dehido on top of the northern aquifers. About three years ago, I believe is, we received a quotation from Guam Waterworks to install sewer into that tracker property would cost the commission about 50 million dollars. And so that, that's what, the history, a small history of the Suta program with Chamorland Trust.
Thank you for that information, and that was only from Waterworks, right? That wasn't, and any information was provided from GPA at that time?
Correct. That was, because we were looking into the waste, the water and wastewater RD loans and grants with USDA.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Joey. Mr. Budasi, I don't know if I said that correctly, but thank you for being here. I just wanted to clarify, in the same token of Senator Chalo, your estimate, again, that was for every linear foot, it was 300 dollars?
Correct, but again, that's not my area of oversight, and I would like to have the opportunity to go back and talk to our engineers and get some firm numbers on that.
Madam Speaker, did we have GPA invited for today? Okay. So do you and GPA have a master plan that could help Chamorland, do you guys have a master plan that is guided along Chamorland Trust properties that could potentially help, you know, maximize this program? Because I personally think if we're going to try to put Suta in every Chamorland Trust property, we're never going to move anywhere. But I think if we do one track of land and focus that Suta funding and the legislative matching fund, then it would actually see some fruition. But I think we need to look at the master plan. Do you know when the last master plan was like revisited?
So we're currently in the process of updating our 20-year master plan. We, we do that exercise every five years. So this is the, the most recent update. It'll be available probably sometime later this year, maybe towards the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, that, that, that will be very much appreciated. I also wanted to clarify, in the same token with GPA, individuals who need water or power infrastructure development, right, and the, and government agency cannot, what do you call it? Infuse it into the property, said individual can pay for it themselves, right?
Correct.
Okay. Can you clarify this and make sense to me that, does the power pole belong to the person who buys it? Or does it belong to GPA?
That I, I'm not sure. I can't answer that question.
The water line paid for by that person, purchasing it to infuse it into their property, does it belong to that person?
So anything after the meter belongs to the customer.
Okay, so said individual who puts 50 linear feet of water infrastructure in, does that belong to that person or no?
If it's part of the main GWA system, it would belong to GWA.
Okay, but you guys didn't pay for it to go in there, but the person who needs it paid for it. So how does that belong to the first, how does that belong to GPA or GWA when the, when you guys didn't pay for it to be infused into this person's land or whatever property? I understand in the commercial sense, but in, in Chamorland Trust issue, right, a lot of properties have no power water infrastructure development in them. So example, again, multiple people, A, B, and C, right? A person that's the most furthest in, furthest in this land area vicinity, right? And B and C, some down, sometime down the road, five or six years later, want to hook up to this person, to that water infrastructure line? Does it belong to you or does it belong to the person who paid for it? Can you clarify that?
Can you restate the question, please?
If someone pays for the power or water infrastructure development, right? Like I said, the one to 50 feet, right, to get to said lot A, and B and C connect to it, does B and C pay A person for that hookup? Or do they pay you guys? That's like a complicated question, I think, but just basically, I pay for the water infrastructure, right?
Yeah.
And then B and C person-
So within a certain number of years, the customer that installs the line and pays for it can recover some of the funds from installing that line from the other customers that connect to the same line. But it's limited, I believe it's like five or seven years within that timeframe. So then, we, we could provide estimates to the customers who installed the line, and then there would be a payment due from the other customers connecting to that customer. That's how the current rules and regulations are set up.
Okay. I just don't understand how that, that works. If you own it, if your, is your power line or your, or power pole or water line infused, you're paying for it, how come the person doesn't get reimbursed for it? But I guess we need to work with you guys to probably revise those rules and regs, because I just, it's a little bit of an injustice for these people to just hook up on that line and not pay the person who put it in their own money into that property, right? Thank you, Mr. Budasi. We need to get testimony from GPA, I guess, on that. On another point for Chamorland Trust, is it still practice that you guys, if you guys don't have any surveying of a general area and the whole, the potential land leasing or tenant, do they, I mean, does the land or leasing pay for their own surveying? And is that still being practiced today?
At this time, that's correct.
Yeah, that's it, Madam Speaker. Thank you guys for your testimony today. I did have legislation proffered in my early part of the year, tried to focus with Guam Housing Corporation, but to no avail, it just died in court. So, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenata, Senator Kenata, sorry. All right, Mr. Budasi, yeah, I also would like to know if the master plan is going to include any projects going towards CLTC properties? I think I've talked to the CEO about that before. Also, does GWA partner with USDA for these type, for any of their Suta projects?
So we have not partnered with USDA in any projects, to my knowledge. We also are seeking legislation to try to be able to get USDA loans similar to this, only at different programs, infrastructure programs. So, I mean, to answer the question, no, we have not.
All right, okay. Sidus Massey told us, I'm going to ask you to relinquish your chairs at this point. Sisus Massey Torres, I'm gonna ask you to relinquish your chairs at this point for some others who have signed up early to testify, including Mr. Jose Mesa, Ben Almandres, okay? Carlos Camacho, and Ronald Legonja. Thank you for waiting, Mr. Mesa, you may proceed. Press the button for the microphone, make sure it's close to you, thank you.
Pressing buttons is very hard.
And state your name for the record.
Okay. Half a day, my name is Sisus, Madam Speaker Terlahi, Senators Kanata and Senators Talatari. My name is Jose Manglonia Mesa, I grew up in Hagaht, and I was in the United States Air Force. I'm 100% disabled, which means I need amenities and to build a house for my, I can't really walk that well, and my back, especially my wife, she can't walk sometimes. I just wanted to state that I am in support of this bill, 288-37, for the amendment and also for that bill itself, that people like me and the many others who are renting places has been suffering for years from the extremely high cost of rentals, whose ancestral lands were condemned by the military, can get a land in which we can build our homes. My parents had no, had to struggle to buy land and build a house for us. Up to now, my siblings and I are still renting at these high rent too, and it keeps on rising. Please help us so that we also, we can apply for the USDA Russ programs and other programs in the GURA. And I'd like to thank GURA for giving us this kind of programs. And with this bill to get more people houses, to obtain low interest loans and grants for the land trust. I would also like to tell you that I have an issue, which is simple, about my agriculture and residential applications. You see, our mom told us, siblings, to go down and apply for the land for the landless in December of 1995. We all went down, and maybe different days, and we turned in our applications and paid $50 for, for the land commission on different days, but we, and we all did. I went down here to the ministry, old administration building, and paid the treasurer, but when I checked the commission, they couldn't find any records of mine. Mr. Cruz from COT said that I had no records, application or payment records from the treasury. My question is, Madam Speaker, is what happened to my $50? I lost my receipt after going back and forth from Rota to Guam, attending University of Guam. Also probably lost and got wet in the different typhoons that occurred. My wife and my siblings are witnesses to the fact that we did pay this amount. They found that I paid $50 for my agricultural, which was in 2005 or '07, and another, I had to pay another $50 just to make sure, to try to get my applications go forward and, and what have you. We really need your help. You know, back then, I'm from Hagaht, I saw Mr. Herrera, before he was dunking the ball, and we were walking like one mile from Nemis Beach to Hagaht and, and we had to play basketball. But now, we're hitting the post and the basketball, we cannot dunk the ball or, you know? So, you know, it's taking us this long. And I was sad and heartbroken when I came back from serving my country for freedom and living on Rota, and found out that my payment was never inputted into the treasury logs or COT. This is the, this is a trust commission and trusted that person back then to process our application, but apparently did not. Maybe they could put another person's name there, or maybe they just forgot. It's a human error, but they're trying to do their best over there at the COT and as well as the land management. Also, I would like to kindly ask this body to please assist my family and my sister Anna Manglonia Mesa, Joaquin Manglonia Mesa, who applied and paid also in 1995, to get our agriculture and residential lots built, and build our houses and farm for sustainability for us. Madam Speaker, we've been waiting for almost 30 years for this to happen, it has never happened. And I've, I've, I heard some people that, people that applied recently that got their lands but no infrastructure. So please help us that applied on December of 1995, that are still renting at high amounts. Mr. Joey Cruz, Ms. Jessica Day, and I had a meeting three weeks ago. He told me that they couldn't do anything regarding my case, and they needed to seek a lawyer for our case. You know, we can solve this problem without paying extra money from our, you know, our people's taxes, I really appreciate it, you know, so we don't have to spend more money. I haven't received an official response letter to my letter addressed to Mr. John Birch or the acting administrator. And I had to call back, but I never received a call back from that meeting. I'm pleading with this honorable and prestigious body to please help us by accepting my affidavit in person testimony so we can move forward. Also to help the hundreds, hundred others that are in the same situation as we are. Please don't send us to the jungles or push us back to the mountains, like what happened to our brothers and sisters in Hawaii that are less fortunate like, like us. We truly need this bill to be amended, to, to get some funding, to help our people to build their houses for their families and to have the hope of ensuring that their families will have a roof over their heads. This was the goal of you, the senators, as well as the governor. I know that all of you care about us. Please help us to have a peace of mind on getting a roof over our heads, over our heads, no? Lastly, I'd like to thank this esteemed body, and also try to get our help, and thank you, the commissioners of the COT for being here. Mr. Herrera, and I saw back there, Mr. Ron Legonja, and the rest of the commission board. Really appreciate you guys being here and trying to help us people here in Guam for listening to me and sincerely ask for your acceptance of this bill or amendments and understanding of my situation. Un don cluna agresamento para todos hamzu. Adios, estamana litalu, gose anen mizu. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Mesa. There's also the chairperson of the trust commission is Arlene Berdalio. She's here with us still, Sisus Massey. And now, Mr. Ben Almandres.
Good morning, Madam Speaker, Senator Taigui and Senator Kanata. My name is Benny Mandiola Almandres. I do have a Tomorrowland Trust lease. It's located in Embley Road, Jigo. I'm here today to testify in favor of Bill 288-S37 LS, an act to amend subsection 75124 and 75122 Bravo 5, chapter 75 Alpha, relative to authorizing the Tomorrowland Trust Commission to secure their infrastructure funding through the US Department of Agriculture's substantially underserved trust areas, or the SUTA initiative utilizing the proceeds and from the Tomorrowland Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund. Now, I've been issued this lease in 2005. I came back from Iraq, I was on RNR, and then I was able to find out that I, I had, I was called up for a lease, so I went and signed that. Now, since 2005, you know, up till today, this is about 19 years, I've had this lease. And the issue is no infrastructure. No road, it's an unimproved road, no power, no water, no sewer, no telephone lines. How can I build? I'm already 58. My children are already out of high school, they're working. I'm renting, I've been renting since 2012. I've been renting over in Ironwood, Ironwood Glen, okay? Till today. Now, it's frustrating that I have to pay rent. I have this lease, but I cannot build because there's no infrastructure. And I'm just here to, to say that, please, pass this bill, 28875, so what, 288, corrected, 28837, so that people, CLTC resident lease, lease, how do you say? Leases, lessies can build. How much longer do we have to wait? I'm not gonna live forever, where I live a borrowed time. That's pretty much I have to say. And please, I'm glad to, I'm very happy to see that two senators are here, but what about the remaining senators? Were they to hear this rather than to see it on the TV? How can we see their expressions in their faces to show that, hey, you know what? We're listening to you. I'd rather, and I'm very happy that at least three of you are here. What about the rest? Where do they stand on this bill? Because I tell you what, there's, out of the 10,000 applicants, only 2,900 leasing, lessies. What about the rest? But most importantly, this bill to help get the infrastructure needed so that we can start living our lives, the tomorrow dream of owning or living in a home. Thank you so much, thank you very much.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Almandres, thank you. Mr. Camacho.
Good morning, Speaker, Senator Terla, and Senator Telo, thank you very much. Today, I, my name is Carlos Camacho. I also wear different hats, I do, actually, Mr. Andres is one of my tenants for the last 12 years. And I hope he graduates into homeownership into the land trust that he owned for over 19 years. So I'm here to support 288-37. This is a program that been available when Congress passed this law since 2008 on the Farms Act. Then finally got ratified in 2012 on April. As stated earlier from the commission, yes, Director Konizawa was director at that time from Hawaii, under the Obama administration, came to Guam to educate the Land Trust Commission and everybody that this program was available. It was so brand new at that time. So as history was told, like Mr. Herrera said, yes, the past administration, Eddie Cabo administration, tried to incorporate SUTA. And as Joey Cruz described, they tried also to do it in Embley, and it was a $50 million price tag. What was missing in all those events, as I watched it on the sideline as a developer, is a source of payment. Because nothing was authorized at that time to put aside any funding source to pay for SUTA debt, if, if granted, since those days that Joey talked about and, and the COTC 166 in Jigo that Mr. Herrera described. So it was very good timing that 288-37 is implemented now because now you're identifying a funding source that can yield whatever SUTA debt and all that will yield. But I wanted to find out if I could suggest a few amendments to your bill. As you know, I do a lot with the federal government, and I've, when this bill came out about a week ago, I chatted with my friends in USDA, here in Guam, Mr. Diego, and in Honolulu, to find out what can we do to put more teeth or more strength in this potential legislation. So they said, Carlos, can you ask if they could add a couple of amendments? Again, this is my own interview with them, but your staff and your policy guys can reconfirm that when you talk to the federal officials. So one of the things was this bill was focused on SUTA. And what they told me was, could we incorporate right before SUTA the word rural utility service to include substantially underserved trust area? Why? Now you have access to two of the RES programs, the direct loan program under RUS and the SUTA legislation under RUS. So you have two access. Why that's important? Because under the direct loan program, the interest rate is at 1%. Under the SUTA legislation, the interest rate is at 2%. And I also did an amortization schedule with the USDA to see what that will yield in total amount of infrastructure funds, depending on the source of funds. With the limited source of funds that I heard from previous committee hall, like Mr. Joey Cruz had mentioned, that they got some telecommunications, telecommunications cable funds of $600,000 a year, if I'm not mistaken. I took that number, then I took a number that's gonna be previously, gonna be the next bill we are gonna entertain after this. And when I took those two numbers, plus the formula that the speaker is suggesting, a 50/50 formula, that 50% would go to the Survey and Infrastructure Fund, the other 50 would go for the loan guarantee or the loan fund. So I took the 50% of that value, and I decided to ask USDA to give me what that would potential, and I don't have access to other commercial revenues other than just those two, I'm gonna use as an example. I did the math at $500,000 annually, $700,000 annually, and $1 million annually. Based on those annual set aside from the cash flow, and the term from the 1% on the RUS, the most it can go is 40-year term. The most that can generate on a half a million dollar set aside is $13 million present value, so they can provide infrastructure. I can provide this to you guys for your record also. And if you went at 750, the most that can provide is $24 million at the 1% rate. If you did the $1 million annually, that will provide close to 32 million in total funds available for infrastructure. Now that's just on two commercial formula that I use to generate based on the 50/50 ratio. If this August body would like to increase that cash flow, then it will be up to you guys to change that formula to 75 toward the infrastructure fund and 25 for the loan fund. That way, that, that fund can increase its cash value based on this formula. Now, Joey was correct when he said, what do we do to increase the grant match? So I asked the feds, how do we maximize the grant with the loan? What I just gave you and described is all the loan formula. In order to get the grant, you must get a couple of support. You guys probably heard the story of the Gil Baza, Gil Breeze situation? For decades, I also sat on the sideline there. For decades, we've been trying to resolve the infrastructure because it was sitting in the northern aquifer. So the US EPA and Guam EPA got involved. And what Joey described is the group called RCAC. And what Joey described is the group called RCA C. It's a nonprofit that works with USDA. They provide the grant side of the formula for that. Unfortunately, uh, you heard the good news that finally those two properties, after decades, finally got their grant infrastructure to place for the Gil Baza to have the infrastructure now so we can protect the northern aquifer and the water line that's needed for Gil Breeze. Now that formula worked. Now, how did that work? All they needed is a letter from US EPA or Guam EPA that these potential subdivision is on top of the northern aquifer. And we, to protect it, we need to bring in these infrastructure. By getting that letter, similar to a case study that has been successful for Gil Breeze and Gil Baza, we can apply that to Chamor Land Trust to maximize the grant side of the equation. And then according to USDA, the grant can go up to forty-five percent or seventy-five percent of the costs. The formula I gave you guys earlier was a dollar for dollar, no grant. But if, if COTC would like to maximize the grant, they would be the one to ask and at least look at those two case study. And when they apply for the grant, they can use that as the, uh, sample to maximize the forty-five to seventy-five percent grant. Now, here's, once we make those amendments, there's another question that maybe you guys will ask. Well, the Western Pacific don't get that much money on the allocation by Congress. As you know, Western Pacific is Hawaii, Guam, Saipan, or CNMI, uh, Palau, Marshall Islands, all of that. We always get a small portion that were competing amongst themselves. Well, what I got also, thanks to USDA, when they came out, they did an outreach up at the University of Guam several weeks ago. Uh, his name is Mr. Otoro, Wokin Otoro, the head in DC that came. And what he provided me in order for Guam to have access to the national pool, and I'll put right this later, under Public Law one one eight dash forty-two, under section seven thirty-six, Guam, Saipan is defined under persistent poverty counties. What that means is now Guam don't need to be part of the Western Pacific pool. They can get access to national pool of funds, which is a bigger pool. And I got that also to supply for you, for the record. And this is good for also COTC to have. So when they do submit an application for SURA or the IRS Direct and have this funding source, they can also assure that they are part of section seven thirty-six so they can get a bigger bang for their buck. Now, again, that's the findings I've got with all my experience. That's what I want to contribute to this legislation to add the flexibility and the opportunity to have alternative source of funding, right? And what, what I like about this is, like Joey stated, when you do a fifty million dollar estimate several years ago, how are you gonna, with that limited resources, how are you gonna handle the other eleven thousand acres? Or the eight thousand families that are waiting, like this one gentleman said? Or the two thousand nine hundred families that are waiting, like Mr. Andres has been waiting for nineteen years? A lot of them got their barrier. Um, majority of it, we know is infrastructure. The problem is, how do we sustain it? This is the bill that will do that right now. And what this bill does also, it pro-rata's the infrastructure cost to the applicant so that they can cost share their one dollar a year plus whatever, according to this bill, the life of the nine-nine years they can contribute and repaying back their allocated share of the infrastructure. Why that? I support that angle because you need to sustain the cash flow so that you can apply that and do it to the other lots. And when you build other lots, you get everybody, instead of waiting for twenty years or two decades, finally get to move and put infrastructure in these properties. Now, I heard estimates of one million per one mile, three hundred per liter feet. That depends. As you know, we got the northern aquifer as the example. When I gave you the Gil Baza, Gil Breeze, that one has to have sewer line because we're, it's on top of our drinking water, uh, aquifer. Well, there's some properties in Guam that Chamor Land Trust has that are not on top of the aquifer. So maybe all they need is power and water. So their cost for the infrastructure is not as high as the guys in the northern part of the island that we have to protect the northern aquifer. So that's the difference. Now, I know Senator Tello mentioned, who do you choose? What do you choose? Who goes first? That, I leave that up to the commission. I figured you have a resource and a vehicle to yield whichever program you're gonna go after. If you decide to go after this thirty-two million dollar portfolio, well, then they'll hold the thirty-two million and distribute it to the properties that are close to infrastructure so can finally turn some chapters over. And like this one gentleman said here that is my tenant, nineteen years ago, he was a young, young guy. Nineteen years later, he's up there at age and his kids graduated from school. So, uh, if you look at nineteen ninety-five, the eight thousand people there and the two thousand nine, they might be at the age today sixty, seventy, eighty. Would they want a thirty-year mortgage today? No. But thanks to the last bill you body sponsored, the grandchild bill that the speaker introduced, allowed the beneficiary to be the grandchild, sister-in-law or brother-in-law, I forget the, the extension. But it allows these guys that waited for twenty to thirty years then now that are seventy, eighty-year-old that doesn't want to get a thirty-year mortgage, but would transfer it to their kids. That bill allows them to transfer to their kids so they can finally build their home and finally they'll probably take care of their elderly parents. So unfortunately, twenty, thirty years, we need these policies so that we can finally get these things going. But one of the barriers, or two of the barriers, in my opinion, was the infrastructure. And the other barrier is, as Ms. Edith Pangolino said, there was only two types of loans they're administering today. The Guam Housing Loan and the VA Loan. Either you're a VA or Guam Housing Loan Program. Fortunately, this body passed another USDA program which allows the third option. And as you know, their rate can go as one percent or three percent or as high as thirty-eight years if the family needs the debt to be minimized so they can qualify. I think those are the missing resources to make this successful. But it is the infrastructure part, as once stated. This is one, Mr. Andres is just one of two thousand nine hundred. The reason I say that is I heard earlier, out of two thousand nine hundred, only one hundred and forty built their home because they have access to infrastructure, as we know, or they met the underwriting loan criteria that's available. But when you add the new loan program that you guys adopted about a month ago that presently Guam Housing and COTC is working at a lower rate and if you provide the infrastructure, I think you're gonna see these local families finally fulfill the dream of homeownership. For the record, I do not own any Chamor Land Trust property. I've always there to help provide opportunities. I remember fifteen years ago, I got a lady named Alicia Panala. Her and five kids living on her land in Adakau on a tin roof with dirt floor. I went to her and I asked her, what can we do? We got HUD to approve the homeowner rehab program. She's the first applicant fifteen years ago. I haven't seen HUD, maybe they have done something after that, come out and do any outreach. But she's now living on a two-bedroom concrete home. That was a HUD program that we did fifteen years ago. I met her about two weeks, three weeks ago because I wanted her to catch up on what's going on. She said, Carlos, you know what you did, boy? She was talking to me, she said, she goes, my five kids live abroad, some of them in the military. I live here, you saved my life. Like, I didn't save your life, you deserved it. You met the criteria. You just gotta know that the program's available. That's why it's like these policies, we can share. I share what's available. Now, that's my opinion. That's based on federal statutory law. But the speaker and the, the staff can reconfirm that and ask the federal government, is these correct? That was stated by one of our person testifying on my bill. And if it is, I hope you can incorporate it so that bill can be flexible and these resources from one percent, two percent, three percent, because they have three, right, and I'll send that. And where I came up with the five, seven, and eight was basically listening to the different sources, like Joey mentioned, the six hundred thousand cable revenue and the one that we're gonna work on in the next bill where I only use those two sources to come up with my number, what it will yield so that the thousands that you guys represent, as you heard, will benefit and finally, uh, move to their home and their land. So I thank you for this opportunity, Speaker. Senator Brown, thank you. Senator, uh, Tello, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Camacho. Mr. Leguany.
Afademaniluhu. Si Ronald Leguanyazu. Um, gaigizu kumo tautautano. Gaigizu lokugini, tatkumunashon chamoru. Gaigizu lokugini pabiripresenta, idias mid, namaniluta man tautauta diman chamoru. Dimanaprika, zamannanga para adudu, ki maskesia hafana manera para mana sedbi, itano ni tanu man chamoru. Zaona be tulistina oportunida, napabituana ho. Carlos, kamatsu, putenne isen angonmu. Intregay ano shia napuntu, bratugidasia, Speaker. Oguloki, Speaker, zaosa hago stikumalamtitini. Estina laipreniponi ni husuputi lokui. Husupotisti laipreniponi dos otsu otsu, trentaisheti. Anuk senadora gehelu na gaigiku resonmu. Zan gaigispiritun idifuntu. Si difuntu ben pangilinen yudahago. Anu lii sti, usao populanzi utatitizi stisha i komishon, i tanu manainata. Zan tumu na memberzu lokigi komishon, i tanu i manurinatna duenu. Lo zaona lokina babituana i, i man presentagi latavta. Be tutunadza ni si memberu si Dave Herrera, Dave, compaleku no, gosmalati no na tauta. Beituana lokui i man memberzaki komishon si Ms. Bodadzu na si Joey. Zaona lokina pa be, uh, saluda zan tuna si Joe Mesa, like Joe, mapustas Joe, agas, uh, tautahu zu mes tun chamoru. Isturanya maniluhu, isturanya ha zu, ta'za amas, patahu nguka i man tauta. Anapuputiku resono. Si Ben talu, bituna si Ben Mendiola, Andres. Atana ano shia. Enigi na gaigiu gini, uh, senora gehelu, Speaker. Zan Tello lokii zan si Senator Brown. Cesar Massey na mangaiyamzu. Imputanti na inhingu kena historiana. Ipamalu na man tautauta nizi Desmond dimanaprika. Zan ipamalu ni manannanga. Mamobli no shia. Ti man getsaga. Manaiwi gini sa maspipaile la niya. Gaigin no shia na man lolantu, mama momoksa egoga. Ti man gogof, ta gi di mamela napropeniponi ni gaigiu mismu gini para eno. Zapa betatu talu para i man tautahu. No shia, man getsaga. Lo i man tautauta, manatsaga. Zatana zu agas manannanga he para esti. Edzigi na gaigiu gini sa tumata zuzu para i man tautauta. Edza. Zaku muli nagua oportunida para ta adudu man tautauta. Edzigi ta cogi. Putabot ta cogi eno, ta ta adudu, ta ta supotisti. Zaona ba be, uh, saluda lokii si compaleku Dave. Dave usaludau, celu para isha i, i minalate mu nipungaduk todu sti da cotsu kontodu ogu ka, Carlos. Adudu esti para i man tautauta. Za, pa benatumu amzu na estisha i, i matocogi para omanagwaha para i man tautauta kosaki o matcogi di ni calania, electricity da, sagan honum, zani sagantaki. Esti i hanum ni man gaigii, i hanomta tautautano man gaigii, hanomta disti odut para hulu dedidu zan zigou. Edzigi hulu na gaigii i hanum ni gini ni, gini ni papa i tanu, i, i lahti sina ta'olu. Fiengletera, i waterlands. Za chilung esti talu ni pata protehi hanum. Man gaigastai waterlandi hulu duru man napakpak bola. Zapogu para makutenu esti gof course. Udodogowano halum sabi fandogota luki dispues di esti. Nishita manapara no. Angipofangof, fangof gisanazasati, tigoko sinefecta. Remampus mekeina no. Lo, bibiro ta ti esti, esti is suta. Ania iduka ho dedidi i compaleku. Kalamprewa sti zan isit fon gi Survey Infrastructure Development Fund gi Guam ancestral lands, i komishon etano i manurinatna duenu. Bunitu shia na kwentu suhu nguk. Za man napeniti talu masu hu hu nguk. Gi entry, dies mid namanaprika, dos mid maybe shantu sa. Man mapati huzum. Za gi entry dies, agit gi entry edzu, shantu kuretaha manatsa. Fienu, Carlos, nishita ta halu la jisti. Putabot, spia, ta ta, ta ta, ta tonik estina priniponi, ta ta adudu i man tautauta. Edzigi, zaona na benaklaaru lokigi gini para eba be faneiduka, para hamzusia ni man ekungu peor i man tautauta. Edzi palabra i manotugi, tafanogi, ngan. An manotugi het, prefectu manotugi het. Lokumu manatus, manatsu het. I palabra tatsu, edzigi komekilanya. Patafanatsu, pataripresenta i minauli para i man tautauta. Edzigi izu na palabra, tafanatsu maniluhu, tafanatsu. Edzigi iklaaru na palabra. Para i man mamela shia na generacion mens sahi sti para hamzoo. Na gaigizu, mens rasgagagi zu gini, lalalaha zu gini. Upupulan hafa i minauli para i man tautauta manautautano. Peor hamzuge no lokii ni man mamobli, ni man yatsaga. Esti agialatsa lokii na uli lai. Bulan i man tautauta, manaiwi ma, manaitse tu. Za, manganga sti, karat, kariten batanga para isha ngonya, kariten batanga zuma fanannan. Za man babatsala luluk, man rikokoi luluk. Za ha bebendigi hulu gi globu. Za newfaisi ni tautauta likofas zelo, ontu sinong gogana para eno. Deigna gana sina kumu sweati a oni, sina shantu pesus. Za ha kokoni asagonya zani famagonya. Za anaputi onai zu sa, ulile na man tautauta, manatsa, manatsaga no shia. Huzum zama spipailena la niya lai. Zan igi unu, manohoka luluk lai. Za ha bebendi hulu gi globu. Grasa sa jo da ma, ma ksesepta. Za una bula i pikopmu. Pa son sugunolu ngi, gana nsa gi zu. Sugunolu ngi zama talang i minakat i pikopmu, karitomo. Wow, lili karitasia ma du sa it, itrongka, itrojonya trong. Ma baba zaga gi liluku. Air conditioner likofas ya. Za pes, manatunuk. Pa sa birigi gatu, pa sa na matalang talu, ma pesa, ma pesa karita. Pa se zu nama, ma tumu differentialnya zama no'ya. Salapi zau lii zu gi matanya nama masahalu. Enigi isha u'aatan. U'aatan im kusturiase famagonta. Peor esti iwa gwan, pogu efektus zan todu. Maninefecta niya dedid. Manaki boka man i man tautauta. Mas pipia i monu ni nasiniya po fanla'la, po fanboka. Edzigi na gaigiu gini na pa besupotisti sa upu, upupulan na lokii. Tishita talu ta pulan lo u'aatan. U'i ilao, i afagagaha gi esti komishon i manainata. Zan gaigia zu talu gi, gi komishon i, i, i manurinatna. Zam gaigia zhu talu gi komishon i manurinatna duenyu. Upupula na anosha, unna inspipianpe nyu, ta tananlatzadik magai ne Senator Telo, ungan Senatora. Gaigizhu gi sa popula na anosha, tungu na obmam zhu gi, you know, lo gaigiu gi para i man taotao ta. I've not comprehend yawa. Zam danginagana, malabida para hafa ne, gaigiu gi, gaigiam gi luki zam si celuta Ronald Clavea zam ipamalu zha ni man, na man gerero. Lo putabot, todu zha i informationi hiningoku, bunitu, zam o Laramond na in mentisti, ni legestis ka gi ni, ni bunitu anosha na salapi no ka, matulaka gi ni para, untolaka zhi umpalabra para ru, zam amas dumankulu i ibang i fondo no. Ilatangonta, ilatangonta mama tongki. Pesanigi lai maniluhu, sijuzma si na anosha, be noi tsansepamalu pa fanstigu zam be ta luagi segundu na laeni mamela. Sijuzma si.
Akamasi, sijuzma si, Senora Leguanyi.
All right. Is there any questions for this panel?
Just one question. First, I'd like to thank everyone who came to testify. And great, you appreciate it, and we're definitely listening what your concerns are. Carlos, you talked about the rural infrastructure, the, let me go back to my notes here. The SUTA and the Rural Utilization Service, you know, two of the types of loan processes. So the question I have is, what is the difference between the timeline that one or the other has? Is it a 50-year loan, 20-year loan, 10-year loan? Is there a difference in the two opportunities for infrastructure funding?
Senator Telo, thank you for that question. Based on my research and my discussion with the federal counterparts that I deal with in my other development, first of all, the reason we want to incorporate Rural Utility Service, because that, they do the 1% loan, and they go up to a 40-year term. Okay, 40-year term. So you can go 10, 15, 20, up to 40, depending on your amount of money you got and what you want to yield.
Okay.
Now, they're the one that suggested if we incorporated that, so we don't just focus on the SUTA funding. At least we have access to two source of funding. That's already will be part of the legislation going through the process. Under the SUTA loan, their rate is at 2%, and they also go up to 40 years. But if needed, they can exceed the 40 years. If, let's say, Chomor Land Trust says, this is all the funds we have, I need to term this into a 50-year, 60-year term.
Okay.
Then you got to go to the Department of Agriculture Secretary and request. So SUTA has that flexibility to go longer if needed because of the limited financial resources.
And the term.
So the difference is, the RUS, 1%, the maximum is 40, no flexibility. The SUTA is 2% at 40 years with flexibility requested by Land Trust if needed because of the source of funds they got may not yield the amount they need. So the difference is the flexibility on the term.
On the term. Okay. That's all the questions I had. I think it's a great inclusion to the legislation. So I appreciate any opportunity. Sijuzma si, Mr. Leguanyi too as well.
Sijuzma si. Senator Brown, I would like to recognize Senator Brown. Thank you for being here this morning. Any questions for this panel?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and certainly good morning to both of you. Carlos, I certainly always appreciate your extended efforts that you have to address housing on Guam. You know, if we were just going to take care of ourselves, we'd be fine, wouldn't we at this stage, right? Our lives are fine. But we do recognize that many of our people in our age group, and even younger, their children, grandchildren, the possibility of ever having a home is, as every year goes by, getting harder and harder. And so certainly, anything we can do to help facilitate, we've seen this Chomor Land Trust land unfortunately lay idle. We've also seen it abused and misused. And I think, Mr. Leguanyi, you can agree with your comments as well, that we want to see the land used for what it was intended for. And see the Land Trust actually, you know, do the proper regulation to ensure that that land is, because there's a whole line of Chomoros waiting that would love to have that property, to use it for its intended purpose, be it for residential or agricultural, and certainly also wanting to see compliance. And I'm sure we're going to get to that in a separate issue, in a separate bill. But compliance with regards to the commercial leases to make sure that they are paying their leases, because, you know, when I had the chance, when I was up at the University of Guam to work with the Land Trust, you know, the list of violations were long and the abuse was great. And I don't know if it's because you don't work for it, you don't appreciate it when it's given to you, but definitely the powers that be that are in a position to ensure that this property is being properly used should be doing that. But the other factor is, we were just here not too long ago, having a public hearing on the Guam Waterworks Authority desire to execute a bond in over $800 million. Unprecedented in the government of Guam. I was the oversight chair, goodness, almost 20 years ago, when they could barely get a million-dollar loan. $800 million to come into compliance with USCPA and the Clean Drinking Water Act because of the contaminants that are now going into our waterlands. And while we're so critical of the military, we're doing our share out here on this side of the fence in contributing to those contaminants as well. And the people of Guam are going to pay that bill. So we are not only going to see increases in other things, we're definitely going to continue to see an increase in our water rates, because people of Guam are going to pay that. And so more the reason, as you've discussed, the need to do what we can to get infrastructure in place, particularly in northern Guam, to ensure that we can protect our drinking water, because that is the biggest threat we have in the growth. Everyone wants to talk about the growth in our economy. If we cannot sustain and maintain our waterlands and the water that we have here, that's going to take down a lot of things. I think we all recognize that. So again, Mr. Camacho, I appreciate your continued efforts to help, because you don't have to do this, Carlos. You don't have to do it, and you're doing it. And a lot of the insight and the research work that you're doing really is your volunteer effort to help contribute, to help these other families to hopefully have these opportunities that many of us would like to see, and some of us now have. So I appreciate that. I don't have any questions. I think you've elaborated on your testimony quite well. And then also, do you, Mr. Leguanyi, your continued advocacy? You know, you say it like it needs to be said, and sometimes it's more language is sometimes the only way. There's certain words in the language that, you know, convey meaning that English does not provide. So I certainly appreciate you elaborating your concerns and the support you have, and also wanting to see compliance and ensure that the property is properly used. Because as I mentioned, there are many Chomoros that will never have the opportunity to have a Land Trust property. And so more the reason I want to see that those that have are properly using the land for its intended purposes. So I don't have any questions. I appreciate both of you coming forth and providing your testimony on this bill this morning. Thank you to both of you, and certainly, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Canata, any questions for this panel?
Not at this time, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you to all of you for waiting patiently and testifying today on this bill and for your insight, especially, Mr. Camacho, for your experience and insight. Do you think the 75-50, 50-50, or 75-25 needs to be addressed today? Or should that be changed in the bill before we move forward?
Speaker, that's a great question. As you know, that formula, I don't have the full cash flow of Chomor Land Trust, and from the cash flow, I just explained the three types of percentage on debt. Then I guess internally, you guys can have your own formula, what you want to yield. But I remember something very similar. It was Senator Restosol, Senator Pangolinan introduced the down payment and assistance program. And one of the things, at that time when they introduced it, the housing cost was capped at 200-some thousand.
Yeah.
As you heard, different description, costs of housing keeps going up. So you gave the flexibility. This body gave the flexibility of the board to make that decision on that percentage. The cap's to the same 10,000, but the costs of housing would be based on the board, based on the inflationary cost at that day. I would think you would probably give the same board that authority, Land Trust, to provide its ratio, 50-50, 75-25, whatever that may be. Because at the end of the, the heavier end of the ratio, let it be 75 or 80, goes to Infrastructure and Survey Fund anyways. And if they needed that to increase the yield of their loan, let it be the 1%, 2%, or 3%, whichever they apply and qualify for, then they would change their ratio so they can meet the debt service.
All right.
So I just need to, I'm just recommending similar flexibility, what they did to Guam Housing, for Chomor Land Trust to have that flexibility. I don't know how to write that policy type, but.
Yes, I'll talk to them, because it looks to me too like the two funds have very similar purposes for infrastructure.
Right.
So, all right. Sijuzma si.
That's my opinion. Thank you, Madam.
Okay, thank you. All right. There are no further testimonies for this bill, and we're going to consider that Bill 259 has been, wait, 288-37 LS has been duly heard by this body. Sijuzma si. All right. We're going to proceed. Now, our next agenda item is Bill Number 179-37 COR. Bill 179 is introduced by Senator Joe S. Augustine, Senator Roy A. Canata, Senator Duane T. Snicholas, Senator William A. Parkinson. It's an act to amend the Chomor Land Trust lease agreement with the Guam International Country Club Incorporated. I'd like to recognize my colleagues who are here today, Senator Joe S. Augustine, Senator Roy Canata, Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Telo Taidegui. Thank you, colleagues, for being here. I'd also like to thank you all for waiting. I know the hearing was scheduled to begin at 9:30, so thank you for your patience. And I'd like to ask Senators S. Augustine to please introduce the bill.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Speaker. Bill 179-37, an act to amend Chomor Land Trust lease agreement with the Guam International Country Club Incorporated. Over the past 21 months, we have provided each of our island power repairs with $100 credit monthly to help our families with the soaring cost of power utility due to the price of oil. Today, I'm grateful that you're hearing Bill 179, which is aimed at modernizing land use and promoting environmental sustainability for the people of Guam. The bill seeks to amend the Chomor Land Trust lease agreement with the Guam International Country Club Incorporated, which represents not just a piece of land, but a trust property with the power to push Guam towards a more sustainable future. The current lease agreement, while beneficial, presents an opportunity for enhancement by incorporating amendments that allow for the generation, storage, and transmission of renewable solar power. We are not only modernizing land use, but also contributing to the sustainability efforts of our island. The extension of the lease term and the adjustment of rental escalation rates reflect a commitment to a long-term prosperity and stability. It is important to note that these amendments have the full support and cooperation with the Guam International Country Club, Inc., and the Guam Land, the CLTC, as displayed by their passing of a resolution demonstrating a shared vision for progress. In the resolution passed by the Chomor Land Trust, regulations for amendments were made to strengthen the support of the Chomor Land Trust Commission. Madam Speaker, an amendment bill reflecting these CLTC amendments were sent to you for great consideration, as it provides greater opportunity for all parties, especially our people. And I know for a fact that Chomor Land Trust may be withdrawing that resolution, because there's a technical error. I think there's a number, they'll be testifying about that. By ratifying these lease agreements and ensuring that accelerated rent payments contribute to Chomor Land Trust Endowment Fund, we are securing a brighter future for the generations to come. This legislation is not just about land and contracts, it's about investing in our people and preserving and safeguarding our environment. As we deliberate on this bill, let us keep in mind the tremendous potential it holds for Guam as we work toward renewable energy and much less reliance on fossil fuel. Madam Speaker, we can eliminate these power credits altogether by passing this bill and creating a solar farm. It will authorize allowing us to be more reliant on the energy of the sun we enjoy every day. And with a new power plant in Okadu, Guam will see even better savings on the use of less oil when it comes online, together with a new solar energy system, like the One Plan for GICC site. Guam will reach our renewable solar goals by helping to save the earth for our children's children. I want to thank Senator Roy Canata, Senator Duane Snicholas, and Senator Will Parkinson for their co-sponsorship. All of you present today to provide testimony and ask my colleagues for their support. Sijuzma si. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sijuzma si, Senator. All right. We have several people signed up to testify today. I'd like to invite them to the table. Mr. Joey Cruz from Chomor Land Trust Commission. Any other Chomor Land Trust Commission members that want to testify, please have a seat near Joey. Mr. Carlos Camacho. Christopher Budasi from GWA. Mr. Van Shelley. Russell Young. I think I just need one more seat, if we can get one more seat. Tareen Pierre and David. Mr. Herrera, will you be testifying on this bill? Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. We'll begin with Mr. Joey Cruz, CLTC.
Thank you, Speaker Trelahi, Senator Brown, Senator Taidegui, Senator Canata, and Senator S. Augustine. Speaker, I would just like to let you know that after I provide the testimony, I will be excusing myself. We have a board meeting to prepare for and an oversight at 2:00 today also to prepare for. So I'll begin with the.
As long as you're here to answer our questions, because we certainly have a few for the Land Trust with regards to this particular lease. So once that's concluded, you're certainly welcome to leave. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, the Chomor Land Trust Commission will not be providing testimony on Bill 179-37. CLTC would like to withdraw Resolution Number 2024-001 submitted on March 2024 to the Speaker's office. During the CLTC board meeting on February 22, 2024, the board motion and passed Resolution Number 2024-001 regarding Bill 173-37. As a result, the incorrect reference in the board's motion has caused a technical error, and the resolution should not be considered during this public hearing. Please note that this error is an item to be discussed at CLTC's regularly scheduled board meeting that will be held this afternoon.
Just stay until we get around to questions. I'm sorry, I don't have the speakers listening. I got to get her listening. Okay, with that, we'll recognize Senator Carlos Camacho to speak next. Can you read that then? Oh, Guam Waterworks Authority, Chris.
Good morning, Senator Brown, Senator S. Augustine, Senator Canata, Senator Taidegui. My name's Chris Budasi. I'm the Assistant General Manager Administration for Guam Waterworks Authority. As far as Bill 179 is concerned, our only issues with it would, just to ensure that we retain our access to the water wells located in the golf course area. We do have about nine wells, I believe, in that area. We do have about nine wells, I believe, in that area, so we would need to maintain our access to those wells. The only other issue that potentially could be a problem would be having to do with wellhead protection. So I'm assuming Guam EPA would be involved in any issues to mitigate the chance of any problems regarding the wellhead protection. So those are the only two issues that come to mind for us on the bill. Otherwise, we don't have a position on it.
No concerns about the aquifer and the change of use? Are there any concerns about the aquifer?
Just the wellhead protection, I think, is the biggest issue. So there would need to be assurances that, you know, should any of the panels crack or anything occur that could have chemicals and other things going down into the aquifer, that there's a mechanism to identify that quickly and to resolve it. I think that would be the only type of issue that we see would be a problem. I mean, we will reach out to our partners at WEary to see if there's any issues around recharge, and we'll ensure to put that in our written testimony that we submit after the hearing.
Okay, Sisus Massey, thank you. All right, so we're now at Mr. St. Nicholas? Mr. St. Nicholas?
Thank you, Speaker. Senators Telot, Brown, Speaker Joe S. Augustine, and Mr. Canata. I'm here to not support this bill. First of all, I am from Dedodo. I was born and raised in Dedodo. I am a president of the Dedodo Veterans Organization and golfer also. I'm supporting with the senior golf, and we would like to see that this golf course be continued rather than be terminated. First of all, in the past, when they were maintaining this golf course, it was a prestigious course. It was a very good course for us to go up as a veteran to utilize that golf course for our tranquil, for our PTSD, and so forth. And if it's, it also uses, we use it as our physical therapy. And for Dedodo's purpose, I mean, we would like to see that that course be kept there so that we would have something in the village of Dedodo for the rights of the junior golfers. You know, we have a big village there, and we would like to see the kids be using that course to exercise and learn the trade of golf. I would be supporting this also because the senior golfers, you know, we utilize this golf course, and we have golf courses everywhere, but Dedodo is pretty much central. You've got telephone, full starts, and all these other places, but prices keep going up. If the course was ever maintained properly, I mean, you know, people play there, even right now, we're still playing at that golf course. But we would like to see a new developer to come in and take over because of the poor maintenance that whoever's running that course now, and I've been talking to some of these people that are real golfers, that they want to see a good developer to come in there and fix that golf course. For years, Mr. Van Shelley, with his kids, junior golfers, they've supported and put in a lot of money for the junior golf. You know, they have a driving range there, but if they would have upgraded that driving range, the junior golfers are still right now utilizing it, but I can't see why that they have to close it down for a solar field where you can always put solars up there, maybe put it up in Mount Santa Rosa or Mount Lamalum. It's even higher up to the sun. So that's my main part is I just don't want to see the golf course closed because I would like to continue to play at that golf course. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, Mr. St. Nicholas. Mr. Shelley?
Sorry. Madam Speaker, can you hear me? Madam Speaker, Senators Tegui, Senator Brown, Senator S. Augustine, Senator Canata. I'm here today as a 45-year resident of Guam. This is my home, and I'm here to speak against Resolution, Chamor Resolution 2024-001. I'm here to speak against Bill 179-37. I'm here today as a father of two sons, which, sorry, which Chief St. Nicholas just mentioned, who had the benefit growing up with a strong junior golf program and a strong high school intramural program that allowed them to truly grow and benefit from the game of golf. I'm here today to speak on behalf of all seniors who desire an affordable place to play golf, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of all the nonprofit organizations who have always used golf tournaments as a fundraising opportunity to raise funds to operate the many important and crucial services and benefits that all the people of Guam need, not just the golfing community. When I first heard what I thought was a ridiculous rumor that GICC would be closed and a solar farm would be built on the land, I thought, there's no way in the world this could be true. It just can't be true. Our government would never allow a perfectly good golf course built for the morale and welfare of our community to be destroyed so a solar farm could be built in its place. You can build a solar farm literally anywhere. Why in the world would we be destroying a golf course, a municipal golf course at that? When it finally became clear it wasn't rumor, and additionally, there wasn't any real public notices being given about the proposal, I knew I had to get involved. My own children received huge benefits from learning the game of golf when their version of a municipal golf course was available, which was Admiral Nimitz Golf Course before it was closed. I had already known the golfing community had all but given up on playing at GICC because it was so poorly managed and in such poor condition. No one enjoyed playing there. As evidence of that, I submit today a list of complaints submitted, given to the GICC management back in May of 2021 from the Guam Senior Golf Association. And I'm not going to go over it all. I've left you a copy of it, but I just want to highlight a few. We gave, I think this is 11, what we thought were reasonable requests to the GICC management. GICC was the only golf course that did not allow golfers to take a golf cart out to the parking lot so they could load their golf bags in and drop their bags off at their cars after they completed their round. When we asked why this was done and could that not be, you know, an exception made, they gave us a flat no. When we asked if they would at least allow those who are handicapped to drive their carts out to their cars to load and unload their golf clubs, they gave us a flat out no. When we asked them if they could put soap, paper towels, toilet paper, those kind of things in the restrooms, they said thieves are stealing it, toilet paper and soap, so no. And the most grievous one that I could never get over was we asked if they could remove the goats from the loading area and the start and finish area of the golf course. These goats, I guess, are pets of Mr. Yohi, the manager. And these goats, you know, left their manure, et cetera, all over the grounds because they were right there in a very high public area. We asked if the goats could be removed. The response, goats will not be removed. Can you imagine any golf course with that kind of criteria which you have to withstand, stepping in manure and maybe putting it in your shoes and getting back in your car, et cetera? At any rate, there's a number of requests made. I left it as testimony for you all to see. In my mind, I always thought that Chamor Land Commission would eventually cancel the lease of the current course management for failing to meet the lease criteria and put it out for bid so that it could be restored and the local golfers could return to a course they at one time so much enjoyed playing. It's a great layout. Then when I learned not only were they failing to manage the course properly, but they were also in arrears in the lease agreement to the tune of nearly $1 million, again, I thought to myself, why hasn't the Chamor Land Trust canceled this lease due to breach of contract? Now, I'll be the first one to admit that when the golf course was closed due to COVID, the Chamor Land Trust probably should have given them some relief in their rent for that short period of time. So I don't know if the total arrears is justified and whether or not there shouldn't be exceptions made. I'm in support of them getting a break. But at the same time, their arrears go far beyond the time of COVID that they were shut down. It's always been a problem. And in fact, I understand that it was mentioned in the 2016 public audit by Doris Flores-Brooks that this was an issue. That's well before COVID, and that the extension of the lease agreement was actually not done in compliance with Guam law. That you can check yourselves with the public auditor's audit done in 2016 of December. The more I learned, the more frustrated I became, so I testified at a public hearing at the Chamor Land Trust back in October. At this hearing, I also learned that the GIC management had in fact sold the commissioners, who are not golfers, had sold them a false bill of goods. And I believe now that Senator S. Augustine, they also sold you that same false bill of goods. And that false bill of goods I speak of is that they said there were too many golf courses on Guam. Senators, the management presented that false argument, and I had testified that I said to a degree there was some truth in what they were saying, but the, what they were giving was a false presentation. And I listed, I said that it's a false presentation for this reason. Number one, the golf courses that they speak of were specifically built for the tourist industry. They weren't built for the local golfer. Number two, once tourism recovers, those golf courses will be full again. And I have to ask you in common sense, when they're making tee times for off-island tourists at $180 to $200 a reservation versus the locals at $50, who do you think's going to get those tee times? Not the locals. And then number three, and most important, the closest course we have to a municipal golf course is the Country Club of the Pacific, CCP. And CCP decided during COVID to continue making the investments to manage the golf course, and they have done so presently. And with that, the facts speak for themselves. A local person, if you want to make a tee time at CCP today, you probably have to do it two weeks in advance. And according to CCP, on an average weekday, they have over 120 packs playing golf. On an average weekend day, they have over 180 players playing golf. And so when I say they gave you a false premise that there's too many golf courses on Guam, it's totally not true. The local golfing community is what is supporting CCP today, not tourists. There aren't tourists here today. And yet that golf course is doing just fine. In fact, they're doing so well that they have told those people that I speak of that want to handle fundraising golf tournaments that they no longer have an interest in providing those tournaments because of the loss of revenue, because they have to discount the price of the golf for each member to play in a tournament versus selling those reservations independently and can give them more revenue. So I have to clearly say that I believe GCC was being dishonest in their presentation, that there's too many golf courses on Guam. It's simply not true. I also testified that Mr. Russell Young, and he's here today, and I'm really happy to see that, that he's here today to testify as well. Mr. Russell, Mr. Young is going to tell you that he was formerly the superintendent for Lille Palace and Anderson Air Force Base. But I asked him because I wanted to make sure I was knowledgeable, and he relayed to me that he, because he had done some contract work for the GICC golf course, that he advised me that there was probably at least a minimum of $2 million in the proper equipment just to begin to try to maintain the golf course. That doesn't speak of the building facility or anything else, just the lawn mowers, et cetera, the equipment they need to get out there and maintain that golf course. Mr. Yohi Koiki, if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly, I apologize. I think you're here. In response to my comments, he testified that I didn't know what I was talking about. And he said that the course at a minimum needed an injection of capital that was required was in excess of $5 million to restore the course to playable condition. Now, I quietly thought to myself at the time he spoke those words, if ever there was a self-indictment that they have completely failed to manage this great asset for the people of Guam, for the morale and welfare of our community, he just did it with perfection. He's basically told you that they're not managing that golf course, and that's why the play isn't there. It's not because there aren't enough local golfers that want and desire to play at that golf course. If you wish to review that entire testimony, I understand that you can do so on the GovGuam PBS TV website station so that it's all there for you to listen to if you so choose to do so. Senators, the GICC golf course was passed and built for the benefit of the Guam community. Properly managed, it will benefit all our young boys and girls who want to learn the game of golf because GICC has a range and practice facilities to do this, while the tourist course is built for tourism either don't have those facilities or they don't care to make them available for our youth at reasonable rates. Properly managed as a municipal golf course, intramural high school golf can once again be held, giving our high school boys and girls a chance to test their skills in a playoff environment and hopefully even secure college scholarships so many of our juniors and high school golfers did when the junior golf and the high school golf programs were active as a result of Admiral Nimitz's course supporting these great programs. Poorly managed, properly managed, our seniors will also have a place to play a game they thoroughly enjoy at rates they can afford. Guam has always had a place in its heart for our seniors, from free college tuition to free access to swimming pool areas, to not paying for driver's licenses, to breaks in real estate taxes. The list is a mile long for seniors, and I've always commended this community for that. But I wonder why in the world we're going to destroy a perfectly good municipal golf course and take that benefit away from them so a solar farm can be built, and I'm going to say this over and over again, which can be built anywhere. It doesn't have to be built on top of a golf course. So speaking of solar farms, it has come to my attention there are investors presently expressing an interest in expanding the solar farm in Inarahan. As much of a mess that current project is, it's become very clear that this must be a profitable opportunity if people want to keep investing in solar. So I want to ask, if GICC is so keen on investing in solar, why aren't we telling them to go invest there? It's clear that there must be some pretty sizable profit margins in putting up a commercial solar farm, even though those farms are presently being now second questions as whether they're really viable options. But I think the reason they've chosen the Guam International Country Club is because the land is already cleared, so they don't have to pay the high expense of clearing that land, which means they're just going to make even more money than they project that they will. And they were going to do it at the expense of the morale and welfare of the golfing community and the community at large. I hope, senators, if you ask that question to yourselves, who is really benefiting here? Is it the investors that want to build this solar farm? Or do you want to continue to support the morale and the welfare of our junior golfers, of our high school golfers, of our senior golfers, of the community at large that depend on golf tournaments to raise funds for all the nonprofits that desire to run these tournaments? Whose interest do you really want to act in? The community at large and the morale and welfare of this community, or some investors that want to take advantage of a land that's already cleared so they can put a solar farm on it when they can do that anywhere? I, again, can tell you, I just, I can't describe the benefits my own children had when junior golf was an active and viable program and high school intramural sports was there and high school golf was played. The private courses, I was dismayed when I was told by Terry Debold that intramural golf was canceled because the private courses no longer had an interest in allowing discounted rates for them to play. That's what a municipal golf course gives you. That's what a municipal golf course gives you. It allows these high school golfers to continue to play a sport they so much enjoy, improve their talents, show off their talents, to maybe in fact get a college scholarship. And the number of scholarships we got back in the day when the junior golf program was active at Admiral Nimitz Golf Course was significant, my own sons as well. So in closing, I want to urge you, senators, in the strongest terms, for the sake of our young boys and girls who desire to learn the game of golf, for our high school golfers who wish to compete and grow in their skills and possibly secure college scholarships, for our seniors in their twilight years who would love to have an affordable place to play and help maintain their health in a positive act or activity, and for all the nonprofits outside of the golfing community that to have a course where they can continue to hold fundraising tournaments and help raise funds that they desperately need in support of our community for other aspects, not just the golfing community. I urge you in the strongest terms to please reject resolution 220-24-001 from the Chamor Land Trust and ask the commission to either force GICC to meet the terms of the lease and restore the municipal golf course to its playable condition or terminate the lease and put it out, the management of this course out to bid so that a new management group can fix it and we can keep the municipal golf course that's so important. Senator St. Augustine, I urge you in the strongest terms to please withdraw this legislation, 179-37, and support the easily over 1,000 members of this community that play golf in this community. Please support them instead of supporting a few investors that want to get rich on an easy place to install a solar farm. And to Madam Speaker Tlahe, if neither of those two things happen, I would like to urge you, please, reject allowing this bill, 179-37, to be introduced. Thank you very much for your time. I'm sorry, I have one more item I wish to present. I have an article that I read that in the United States, states are now resorting to putting solar farms on water because land is such a precious quantity. And there's a copy of an article here that demonstrates how South Korea has done that in a major way. Now, I don't know if Fina Lake is a possibility or inside the harbor in certain areas is a possibility to put the solar farm on water, but it's the latest trend. And if land is a limited quantity in the United States, it's certainly a limited quantity here. I was listening to Mr. Mesa testify about the land issues for his home and his family. And I would say that land is precious here. And I would ask you all to read what the latest issues are with commercial solar farms. Ideally, I mean, no one is against solar panels. I mean, it's a green solution, but I think the way it really works is to provide incentives for homeowners to put solar panels on their roofs to offset the power supply that GPA needs to do and not make massive solar farms to take up excess land that's severely limited. So I did also attach in my testimony an article that I wish you all would read. I'm sorry that I forgot to mention that previously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shelley. Did you testify yet, Mr. Camacho? Okay, so, well, you're next on the list. So Mr. LaGuatia? All right, okay, well, next panel, Mr. Blas?
Good morning, Speaker Tlahe, Senator St. Augustine, Senator Canata, Senator Brown, and Senator Telo. My name is Frank Blas with a middle name of G. And I want to testify, I am testifying against the bill and hope to convince you to vote against this particular bill. Because these are my thoughts. In the beginning, when they first proposed to build a community golf course, GICC was developed for the community of Guam. And these are the reasons why it was approved. The issues that you have mentioned was a factor in granting a permit to the requesting parties. There were no objections by the people of Guam, provided that environmental impact statement was studied and adhered to. Consequently, the end result was the construction of GICC, Guam International Community Course. Politics, politics, greed, pandemics, natural disasters, drownings, lawsuits, maintenance and government administrative interferences have prevented this course from becoming the best community course in this part of the world. It became an investment, a money-making deal rather than serving the community. GICC has benefited the users of this facility and the people of Guam through the following years. Following benefits are as follows. A, facility that provides an affordable venue for local golfers.
All right, Mr. Blas, I can't hear you. Could you repeat that and just pull that microphone closer? Thank you.
Closer? Is this good? I'm sorry. Okay, how's that?
That's good. Could you repeat that last sentence? Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Following benefits are as follows. A, facility that provides an affordable venue for local golfers. B, a facility that provides an affordable venue for beginning golfers. C, a facility that provides an affordable venue for junior golfers. D, a facility for tourist golfers. Employment, taxes from revenues generated by green fees, cart fees, space rentals, and many, many more. Entertainment, relaxation, exercise, bragging rights, and stress relief. Great therapy. My objections for turning it into a solar farm are as follows. A, we are building a new power plant to provide enough power to provide the island. So they say that this new plant is going to benefit our people. It's ugly, right next to a hospital. Not much planning went into that. We have two huge farmers, solar farms, and one on base, Naval Station. I know because I commissioned both, two of them. I'm also a master electrician. I'm a solar, I teach at the Guam Trades Academy. I'm a master electrical instructor. And so I know my stuff. We have two huge solar farms, one in Malolou and the Samsung Solar Farm at the Marbocave area. How efficient are they? We have not been informed as to how efficient they are. Our power bills keep going up. Charitable donations from our government are used to distract consumers from seeing the big picture. What have we gained from the government approved solar farms? Solar farms are good provided they are properly engineered and maintained. There is currently a study about building a nuclear-powered power plant, which I believe is something that we should study very hard. It relieves us out of the oil depletion that is happening on our planet. It is not just about Guam. It is our help helping our planet. It's cheaper than any of the GPA diesel plants. We have depended on diesels for a long, long time. Solar was, I am for solar because the energy is free. The bills cannot change unless God changes the rates from the sun. But the problem is that the way they plan these solar plants, and I know because I commissioned, I helped commission the one in Malolou. I manned the generators, how it would operate as the clouds go by. And sure enough, when a gray cloud passes over, the generators start ramping up. And when the clouds disappear, generators ramp down. So you have this constant acceleration and deceleration of the generators. And I said, the only way that this is going to work is if they put batteries. This was the very beginning of the building of this solar farm in Malolou. Now, I don't know the exact plans that are happening down at Marble. I haven't seen any results coming out. My power bill keeps going up. Not only mine, the people's power bill's going up. I'm asking you to repeal, repeal this bill to change GICC into a solar farm. GICC as a golf course benefits the people. Solar farms, all these big investors, they'll build something. They'll do anything to try and get it. But remember, the first reason why we built this GICC, we permitted them, is to benefit the community. We lost Admiral Nimitz. The veterans had nowhere to go but to very expensive golf courses. GICC provided them this therapeutic gain. Now, so my final word is, please reconsider, Senator St. Augustine. Please reconsider about pulling this bill back. And rather than destroy it, let's fix it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blas. I'd like to recognize Senator Frank Blas has also joined us. Thank you, my noted leader. And Russell Young?
Good morning, Speaker Tlahe, Mr. Canata, Senator Blas, Senator St. Augustine, Senator Brown, and Senator Tidaway. I got it right? My name is Russell Young, and I am formerly the original golf course superintendent at the Lille Palace Resort. I've been here in Guam for 32 years. At one point, I have done a little bit of work on almost every golf course on Guam. And I was at Lille Palace when it was just dirt. So watched and supervised a lot of the construction of the golf course and got to see the... Got to see everything that has to do with putting a golf course together. At the same time that we were building that, Telefafa was being built, GICC was being built. And I really like what Ms. Joanne Brown said a little while ago is that the goal of the CLTC is to have the property used for its original intention and utilized in that manner. And the original idea with GICC was to have a public golf course that, again, the junior golf can play, the seniors can play, and the general public can play at an affordable price. Anyone can see, if you go out to Lille Palace now, that the COVID-19 virus had just a terrible impact on all the courses. And there was a while there, for I think almost two years, where there wasn't even a single Japanese tourist here on Guam playing golf. How these golf courses survived, I don't know. During that time, I was working, I had already left Lille Palace, where I was for 12 years, and went up to Anderson Air Force Base at the Palm Tree Golf Course and basically rebuilt that golf course, both the greens and tees, pretty much. I can't say anything much better than Mr. Van Shelley did. The facts and the information that he gave were very clear, and I agree with everything he said. And I also oppose a solar farm. I only live five minutes from Guam International Country Club. And I oppose putting a solar farm over nine of our drinking wells. There's lots of other places to put solar farms besides over nine of our drinking wells. There's a lot of possible... I don't know the facts about it, but I'm sure there's a lot of more potential for materials or chemicals or whatever getting into our aquifer because that's a whole lot of drinking water that comes out of those nine wells. So I'm in favor of appealing, how do you say it, repealing? Yeah, not passing this bill.
Yeah, the bill has not been adopted. I mean, it's been introduced, so it would have to, if it moves forward, it would have to go up for consideration by the legislature.
Okay. And trying to revive the Guam International Country Club into its condition that it was in at one point. It was a very, very nice golf course and still can be. With, yeah, there would have to be an inflow of money in the beginning, but it could be put back to where the junior golfers would have a place to play golf. The seniors, you know, there's the Tuga group, the seniors group, the strikers group, the architects and engineers group, and all these groups that used to play there all the time. And I know that a lot of these guys are retired. And it's expensive to go and play at a lot of the other golf courses on Guam. And having an affordable public golf course was the original intention of the Guam International Country Club. And I'd like to see it myself. I got two grandsons now on Guam, and they're playing golf with me. I'm teaching them. And I just take them to the driving range of Bonner Anderson, but not everybody can do that. So I don't have any more to say, but except for I'd like to see if there's a possible way we can do it, that we keep the Guam International Country Club a golf course.
Thank you very much, Mr. Young. All right, Mr. Camacho. Are you with Mr. Koila?
Ready?
Yeah, either of you.
Thank you. My name is Carlos Camacho. I am the consultant for GICC. Speaker Tlahe, Senator St. Augustine, Senator Canata, Senator Blas, Senator Brown, and I don't, she's coming back, Senator Telo Tidaway. You know, the reason I asked to speak last, I can understand Mr. Shelley. And I just wanted, for the record, Mr. Shelley, his son is married to my niece in San Diego. So everybody is kind of related in Guam. But when I heard him at Chamor Land Trust, I went through a seven-month process to work with Mr. Yohi and GICC. I was asked to look at a diverse economic opportunity to sustain the cash flow. This was a very, it was a very difficult decision because, yes, you're right. Mr. St. Nicholas, that was here earlier, is a good family friend, retired fireman. And his wife and my mom are best friends. But we just chatted in the background and tried to figure out. You know, I told Mr. Nicholas, I got nothing against your goals and wishes on repealing 179. I'm going to state the facts and state the reason why we're doing this. And for Mr. Shelley, at that time, in the last seven months, when we did debate at the Chamor Land Trust Commission, what he just stated earlier that we're putting a lot of puffy things, that we got other golf courses. Well, if GICC was the only golf course... Well, if GICC was the only golf course and no other golf course, yes, that statement seven months ago was correct. I wouldn't take this endeavor if that's only a golf course, because that's the only municipal course. We do have the other golf courses around. So when he said that, what he made some claims, that these golf courses are expensive and may not be affordable for our seniors or for the junior golf. I bent backwards with Mr. Yohai, and I said, could we look at how we can be creative to make it a win-win? Mr. Shelley represents, as he stated in the record, that there's over 1,000 seniors and junior golfers that could use this course because of the rate, the rate. Now, I also look at the history of this golf course. Originally, it was Mr. Gus Gogui, and that was under Department of Land Management. That was the hiccup, when Department of Land Management gave him that for a golf course, then transferred to Chamor Land Trust. Then when it was being renewed, at that time, everything had to go through legislative process. And that was Mr. Mike Borhad, that went through that exercise when he was a director at that time at Chamor Land Trust, and the body finally approved it. But if you look at the history of the two different owners, yes, it was, you're right. You saw a seesaw economic scenario. Good days, bad days, good days, bad days, arrears, bad, catch-up and pay. So when the pandemic hit, Mr. Shelley said, can you help me figure out how we can get our payment plan? As what Mr. Van Shelley said, because of COVID, I wish they would have made the payment arrangement, which we did. And the arrears was some six-figure number. So one of the board of commissioners said, we'll give you the, a probationary period to Mr. Yohai, and if you are not late in your current payment and paid your probationary liability, then we'll, we will not reneg or cancel your lease. But we would recommend if you look for a sustainable economic cash flow, so that we don't have to go into the seesaw event over and over. I understand the golfers, they need a place to go. So what we did is we reached out to the other six golfers, golf communities. What can you do to assist these junior golfers or the seniors? They wrote a letter in March to the speaker, direct to the speaker, and they said they will provide the opportunity for these guys to play their course and provide a discount to them. As you stated, they don't do discounts, but this is in writing from their association. That is also in the file to be put as record. Furthermore, one of the golf courses that has a driving range offered to use their driving range at the same rate that GICC is paying for their bucket for the driving range. So we knew that it was a win-win situation, that we would get these guys to participate. Now, one of my ideas I brought up at the commission meeting is, well, anybody can put that in paper, and anybody can withdraw that in paper, right? So one of the ideas, I said, they always give QC's for hotels and all that, and they got the local rates and all that. Why couldn't we put some teeth to it? So that's an idea I brought up at that commission, and that's an idea that the 15 body members here can put and solidify. If any of those courses are willing to entertain the junior golf, the senior golf at a lower rate, then put some teeth to it, if you want to put some QC. If the letter's not strong enough, because anybody can reject that letter as they submit it in March. So you know, I got nothing against the 1,000 golfers. But here's something that I try to tie the two together. Remember, earlier we had Bill 288, that's 37, called the infrastructure and survey fund and source that Speaker tried to do, so we can finally get the 10,000 people and their families, been waiting for two decades to fulfill, to build their home. A lack of infrastructure. We need a source, a sustainable source. I got nothing against 1,000 golfers that Mrs. Shelley said, but if we already have six other golf places that they can go and play based on schedule availability, if that's the case, then that's fine. But if you got 10,000 people that's been waiting for two decades, two decades, you heard them testify, I've been waiting for 19 years. I'm still renting out there, and I can't even get to my land to build my home because there's lack of infrastructure. And no blame to nobody here. You guys are the policymakers, making the policy, so we can have the source, so we can utilize federal programs to bring the infrastructure and finally build them that home when they got the water or power or sewer, depending on where they're at. That's what we're doing. If the golf course does not win the solar bid as stated in that proposed legislation, we'll, we have to go back and stay as a golf course. If we win and we think we are based on the source, and I, when I got involved, there are a lot of opportunities. We're right next to a power station, a substation that will cut our costs. The gentleman mentioned that he did the Malolo one, the offsite, I'm not sure if you mentioned, the offsite to connect to the substation was miles and miles away. That cost that development down, but they met the sole, the sale of the agreement to GPA. Marbo was the same thing. They had to offsite the utilities all the way up to the top to Route 10. So when we saw this body pass a 50% of GPA to go into solar renewable, so it can be less dependent on fuel, more benefit to the families, yeah, we're not seeing the results yet. You're seeing the policy that you guys passed. And I think in the last presentation they did, they're only at 16% of the solar farm. And you guys pass a 50% of them to going to renewable energy. If that comes in, and the Ukuru Plan comes in with higher efficient fuel, maybe we'll finally see it. We're seeing the growing pains. And yes, this body passed the energy credit, so it can help offset, like Mr. Blas said, the costs of utilities are high. But you gotta start from somewhere. You gotta start from somewhere. How do we sustain the cash flow to support 28837? I gave that formula earlier today. I only have two access of revenue that we're presenting. One is if this bill passes, we will prepay, the GICC and the solar partner will prepay their lease for the 30 years, as stated. And the Chamor Land Trust will choose their own appraiser to verify the net present value. But if that's not what they want, and you want a pay schedule, then we know that that's too sustainable versus the seesaw effect for the last two decades on the golf course. I got nothing against the golfer, because they're all my friends. Mr. San Nicholas is a friend. Like I said, Mr. Shelley's son is my cousin's husband. But I have an op, I have the right, I want to help the 10,000. It's been two decades. 20 years ago, I'm already XX date, I don't want to tell them, because this is live, I was a lot younger then. But today, you heard some, some of these guys that are already in their senior years. They're gonna build a home at that age, a 30-year mortgage? No. Again, thanks to the speaker and you guys to identify and modify a reg, a statute to allow grandchildren and other members to take over as a beneficiary. So those, those manomko's that were young at that time, 20 years ago, that are manomko today can transfer it to their siblings or kids, which you guys authorize and pass into law. Now we're missing the other part, the infrastructure, so that these 20-year applicants, 10,000 of them, 2,900 of them. And you heard from Guam Housing, only 140 loans have been given out. Majority of that's the SBA loan because of the low interest rate, and the rest is VA, 24 of that is VA, and 30 or 40 of that is Guam Housing. Now that's your economic multiplier. How do we provide these guys half the promise they did 20 years ago, when you gave them, when, not you guys, but when the Chamor Land Trust gave them the property? But they didn't give them the full property. I've always used my pointed finger and this thumb. This is the house, this is the land and infrastructure. Well, they gave them the land, as you heard, but a lot of them don't have infrastructure. Now, 288, that's 37, is a source for finally using this infrastructure loan program that the US government has set aside, under SUDA or under RUS, and those programs. But we need a steady funding source, so these guys, the, the families that have been waiting, will finally have the opportunity to move forward and get their home in Guam. Again, I got nothing against the golfers. Like I said, if there only was GICC as the only golf course, and, and there was no other six golf courses, then maybe I would not be here today. But because I know there's gotta be a balance, there gotta be a win. And again, when we bent backwards, when we heard Mr. Shelley say that there are those golf course, you know, we, but here's the reason, here's the reason. We, we, we reached out to those other golf courses. And basically, they concur to see how we can have a win-win solution. So this is, and for those other little things he mentioned, you know, about the the goats don't rent the car, the cars, I mean, if this was a perfect world, then we all would be 100% today. It's not a perfect world, you know? If this was a perfect world in 1975, when they passed the Chamor Land Trust, they would have solved the infrastructure problem at that time. But it was a growing and learning experience from '75 to '95 to today. And up to today, you guys are still passing amended policies to make it work. And the latest is 288, that's 37, so they can have a sustainable debt service to you to build this infrastructure. That's what we're saying. We just want the opportunity to sustain the cash flow on the commercial side. We're not taking it away from anybody. I, I apologize to my friends, Mr. San Nicholas and that, that I'm fighting for the 10,000 or more families versus the 1,000. Because I know the 1,000 could play in the other golf courses. But if this, this body want to put, put more QCT, so that they are recognized with a more statutory policy, then I hope you guys, the 15 member of you guys can figure how that will work. Because as some of my friends in the golfers say, well, Carlos, anybody can put things in writing, anybody can remove things in writing. Right? One man, one man can put in paper, one man can take away in paper. But one man can put in policy, will not be put in, can be taken away from policy if a QC is given to protect the junior golf and the seniors. So therefore, our goal is to do this to sustain it. If we do not, again, win the GPA, because there's still gotta be a competitive process there, win the competitive process. If you look at the, the bill that is being proposed, the golf course stays. So that, that is my view and my opinion, again, to my friend, Mr. Shelley, Mr. San Nicholas, Mr. Blas. Is there any other question? That's the reason I'm moving forward to support 179. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Camacho, can you repeat the part about the competitive process? If, there's a competitive process? Are you saying the bill talks about that?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
In order to go to the solar, just because we got the authority to go into the solar, just like getting the property zoned correctly for a multifamily housing, single family, you gotta get the zoning and the criteria to compete for one of those cri, criteria. So we submit this to GPA, and we met the, the conditions, and we win the price based on the power purchase agreement, right? That ultimately we sign, then we move forward. If we do not win, the same legislation that Senator San Augustine introduced, we stay the golf course. But I wanted to make sure, one more thing clear, the benefit.
I got it.
Right? They want to make sure who benefits. Based on the 65-megawatt scenario on this farm, if it was converted to a farm, there would be 13 million gallons of fossil fuel saved. How that will affect the EIA rate, I don't know. I mean, that's supposedly why you guys passed the 50% renewable energy policy a year, a year and a half ago. There will be 40,000 residents, if that ever gets effective. Remember, this is called, this is different than the home program where you build a solar on top of your house.
No.
This is called a utility-scale solar. So it benefits the per string, not the individual. Why I know this? Well, we tried to do this for some of our schools, and the same utility says, well, we can't offset the cost to just that one client, the government client, and then the other rate pairs are gonna carry the cost, right? Remember that argument?
Yes, sure. Okay, thank you.
That's, that's all.
Mr. Camacho. All right, there's other, also, two other people signed up from GICC, would, would you like to testify? Mr. Yohai Koila?
Thank you very much. Speaker Tlahey, Senator Brown, Senator Kanata, Senator Taitaui, Senator San Augustine, Senator Blas. Thank you for my opportunity to speak here. My name is Yohai Koike, General Manager of Guam International Country Club. First of all, I don't want to discuss anything about what Van, Mr. Van Shelley talking about my mismanagement of Guam International Country Club, you have nothing to do with this bill. And we can talk in some other place about the goats or toilet papers or senior cannot, I have all other, I have my opinion towards that, and, but I would not like to talk about wasting your precious time here. Same, I just basically would like to say that since the COVID hit, our golf course has been suffered very much. And from the government shutdown, and our course have to be shut down as, as well. And we have been, since that, we have almost $800,000 arrears to COTC from the start of the COVID. We couldn't generate any revenue from, from it. Somebody said here that there were no Japanese or Korean tourists came to Guam to play golf. So same as other businesses, we suffered, but, so almost a year or, almost a year ago, COTC called us to, to solve this problem with, with the arrears we owe to COTC. Thanks to the COTC board members and committees, we agreed on catching up payment plan. We have been keeping our promise, and we have been paying our catch-up fee plus our monthly rent. You can, you can ask to the COTC staff about our payment. So during this process, I have attending all the Chamor Land Trust monthly board meeting. And I noticed that all the sad stories of Guam people losing their homes and, and, and living under the tent with, and tarp. And, and COTC boards are doing great job doing this, and then ask me, ask me, what can you propose to solve this problem with the GICC? In that time, I consulted with Mr. Camacho, how to, how to come up with this solar plan. That's why we're here, and then I think this bill, it will help many of the Guam people, and then I think Mr. Van Shelley mentioned about the main purpose of disagreement between COTC and GICC. Yes, that is correct, that this is mainly purpose, main purpose was to provide a service as a municipal golf course to the people of Guam, for the golfers, yes. But what is the main mission of COTC? the main mission of COTC? Is using, that, that is the using, best use for Guam people. I think now that Guam, Guam's golf business structure is almost non-sustainable, I think the solar power, this bill, one seventy-nine dash thirty-seven will be the alternative sustainable solution for the COTC and for the Guam. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Can you please state your name for the record?
My name is Yohei Koike.
Thank you very much. Is there another person, Mr. Jerry Tang?
Thank you, Speaker. My name is Jerry Tang. I'm the Secretary for GICC. I, when I came in this morning, I thought that was a signup sheet. I wasn't really intending to speak. But after hearing the testimonies provided by some of our local golfers and the testimony by Mr. Camacho and Yohei, and I see that in attendance here are Commissioners Bidalio, Commissioner Herrera, and earlier I saw Commissioner Garrido. And one of the things that I think I want to start off with is, you know, I haven't been a resident for Guam since I was four. I really consider myself, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to be Chamorro, but I think I'm about as close as an immigrant can be. And I love this island. I'm a golfer. I'm in a golf club. But having attended all these Chamor Land Trust board meetings, it really just, it was an eye-opener for me. For someone who's been a resident of Guam for forty-eight years, I never realized just how many Chamorro families don't have homes because they're, they have land trust land, but there's no infrastructure. And I was really, really moved by just how hard and dedicated the Chamor Land Trust works to help these beneficiaries. If you look at their agendas, because I've, I've, I've never attended any of their meetings until attending them for GICC. Every month, you look at that agenda and you have new business. Sometimes there's thirty families there. And, and, and what struck me is like, it's not just the commissioners, the entire staff. They have to prepare for, for these meetings because they're there for, they're there for their loan guarantees or they have some lease issues. And what's that, what really impressed me was I see the commissioners always just do everything they can to, to help them. I was even shocked. We're always last on the agenda and we should be because, because, you know, priority is to the beneficiaries. There are even so many occasions that it's like six o'clock and, and, and the Chamor Land Trust Board members, their staff are still working because they, they need to get through that list. Because for, when you are homeless or when you need something, you need shelter, every day delayed, every month delayed, you can't just, you know, push it back to the next meeting. So sometimes they were even like, hey, you know what? Let's not wait till the next, next month to, to help these people. How about we just, I guess as a technicality, instead of having to renotice it, hey, we'll just continue it. We'll continue this meeting. And what's that? So I, I want to start over that. And the reason why I decided to speak today, I wasn't originally intending to speak, is because I think we, everybody left out something. Everybody who spoke left out something. We as golfers, yeah, we want, we want affordable golf for, for, for our juniors, our seniors. But it is not, we got to start, what is the mission of the Chamor Land Trust? What is the mission of the Chamor Land Trust? Is it to subsidize golf? Is, can, 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 can our government leaders think of a better way instead of, hey, you know what? We're going to have a, use Chamor Land Trust land and, and make Chamor Land Trust subsidize golf for, and, but Chamor Land Trust, that's not its mission. It needs the money. It needs the money for infrastructure. And I, and I, and I can't stand it when, when we have people here, right? Like myself, they claim they, they, they love this island. They're, they're immigrants like me. But they don't love this island. If they put their golf habit before the needs of the homeless Chamorro families, it upsets me. I'm angry. I'm angry by that. So, so Mr. Camacho, I'm so impressed with his testimony because he has all these great ideas. If we put our mind together, can we not come up a program that's win-win for everybody? You know, I, I heard the testimony of Russell Young earlier. He mentioned that, hey, after COVID, I don't know how all those other golf courses survive. You know what I'm going to say to them? Barely. They're not surviving. They're not surviving. So if a, if a private for-profit golf course with expensive rates cannot survive, how can a subsid, how can a course that's forced to have reduced fees survive? How can, it's, and, and we talk about, oh, look at the math, you know, and, and sometimes, you know, when, when Mr. Shelley, sometimes I take offense to your testimony because you make these insinuations that it's upsetting. When they say, let me speak, number one, that's a sign, even at Chamor Land Trust meetings, when, when people are speaking, he feels fear to interrupt. He feels privileged to interrupt whether it's I'm speaking, the commissioner's speaking, he'll just interrupt. I think it, it shows a prejudice because at, at one of our hearings, he goes, hey, you know, all these Japanese-owned courses, who do you think they're going to favor? The, the, the Japanese paying the high rates or the locals? I, I, you know, as a golfer, when you make a phone call to make a tee time, they don't ask you, hey, are you a tourist? Are you local? Before they tell you, you know, if there's space. As golfers, you know that when you call, right? It's, it's the first thing they ask you, oh, I need a tee time. They ask you, are you local or are you a tourist? They just tell you when's the next available. It's not, those type of insinuations are the type of stuff that promotes Asian hate that's going on in the, in the States. What's that, you know, and, and they feel so privileged to, to just say that. It's very, very upsetting to me. It's just not true. So many things are not true. So I understand the need for a golf course to support our junior golfers, our seniors, all locals. But there's a better way and it shouldn't come on the back of the Chamor Land Trust. It's not their mission. And, you know, we also talk about, oh, you know what? You know, all the nonprofits, it's true. But all the golf courses, all the golf courses, whole tournaments for nonprofit organizations where they have reduced rates, all the golf courses have heavily discounted rates for locals. And can they do more? Sure. But can they do it without going broke? I'm not sure. They might need help. They might need help. And, and this is another situation where I think like, hey, we want these golf courses to survive. We, we also need these private golf courses to survive because that's part of our tourist industry. That's part of our tourism industry. So I urge, you know, this body, I, I, I urge, you know, Carlos, what's that, to come up with ideas that's a win-win for everybody. So, so that's what I want to talk about. And, and, and I'm sorry I'm going on, but in terms of the, the, the bill itself, why I like this bill is because it provides almost up to nine million dollars upfront. It accelerates the rental payments that's going to be paid over the remainder of the, the lease and it's going to pay upfront. What more? What tenant can say that? Instead of having to, you know, yes, if there were, you know, rent payments back then that, that because of COVID or, or, you know, a, a lack of tourists, right? What's that, that made rent payment unstable? We're not going to have this issue anymore. The rent will be paid upfront. And also attending the hearings, what's that, it's really up to Chamor Land Trust how they want to manage those funds. They, they know best how to use it. But if they choose to invest it, what's that, I think it was Director Byrne, was the, from, what was it? Ancestral Lands? Birch, Birch. So he also talked about, you know, his experience with managing Guam ancestral lands funds and he was able to get like, you know, or, you know, between five to eight percent return on that money. And if we do the math, what's that, if you, if, 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 you know, someone like Director Birch can get those type of returns on that nine million, what's that, that would exceed the annual rent, way exceed the annual rent that, that GICC is paying now. And over the, over the months of meeting with the Chamor Land Trust, the commissioners drove, they, they advocated for their position so strongly. And, and I, I'm not sure what happened to the resolution, but what's that, one of the things that they thought about, and I thought, well, hey, you know, this is a great idea. They asked for the use of the clubhouse to become a permanent home, permanent home for Department of Land Management, for Chamor Land Trust and Guam ancestral lands. All of them, they're at the ITC building now. What's that paying, I, I think, going to call this, over eight hundred thousand dollars a year. So that's additional savings for, for the island of Guam. So there's so many benefits to this bill. I don't even know the environmental impact. Instead of having a golf course over, over the Northern Aquifer with nine wells on it, right? Nine wells in area. Instead of a golf course that is using pesticides, fertilizers, now we have clean solar panels. And what's that, anyway, what's that? The gentleman next to me is chuckling, but I don't know what's so funny about that because part of the things that we're going to do is to make sure that these are PFAS-free panels. The technology for panels has improved so much over the years that, I, I don't know, I don't think it's funny about that. I don't think there's anything funny about trying to bring infrastructure to Chamor Land Trust property to meet the housing needs of our Chamorro families. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. T. All right. We still have several people signed up and I need to clarify on, I mean, sorry, Chamor Land Trust, Mr. Herrera, can, can you, is Mr., is it? I know, I know. I also have the Attorney General. Are you here to testify on this bill? Okay. Mr. Pierre, I'm really sorry, but they have a meeting at noon. I know they're trying to get to, do you mind if I ask him to testify first?
I am retired and I'm used to Chamorro schedule.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
So the Chamor Land Trust meeting is at twelve or one? Oh, okay. Sorry. It's okay then. Do you mind waiting? Are you going to stop for a few minutes, Mr.? Okay. All right. Please proceed, Mr. Pierre.
Hi, this is an address. Buenos dias. Si jupmas for letting us giving you our opinions and our, my name is Pierre Massotaren and most people around the island, because they cannot pronounce my name, call me Frenchy. I represent here myself, but also a constituency that has not been heard of yet, the neighbors of the golf club. I am located, I'm the Secretary of the Boomachachu Yumato neighborhood. And we are located between the golf course and Ipapao estate. So if I might make a joke, around Ipapao, we know what the smell test is. And so there are several issues and I am testifying against Bill one seventy-nine dash thirty-seven for several reasons. I am not against solar power. I think it has its place in a multi-approach power generation that we need to have on Guam in order to attract more industry, help sustain the ones that's existing here and give jobs and keep our people on island rather than having them leave the island to get better opportunities outside. But this is the wrong location, the wrong partners and the wrong conditions. If you read the bill, you have a lot of can rather than will, which means that if you look, if you read the Bible often enough, you will see that you can judge a tree by the fruits it gives you. And so far, we have an issue with both the CLTC, which is not the fault of the CLTC. It, it is a structural issue that we are all aware of, where the CLTC has to manage land and let people live on it who cannot get loans. And Mr. Camacho is trying very hard to find solutions. We saw the snafu that the Speedway ended up being. And what I do not want to see is another snafu with a golf club. I would like you to also know that the people on Gura, which is stuck right on the land surrounding, it's surrounded by the golf course, have already approached us as their neighborhood and also the people on Kaiser, which is on the other side of Inde Dede. And you have a nimby movement that is being growing now. And people are very hot under the color for not being part of the discussion. The people have many concerns, including beautiful solar panels, which we know are very difficult to dispose of when they arrive at end of life. And a lot of the other issues, putting solar panel over wells is not a panacea. And for the project is also not a panacea for CLTC. CLTC is grabbing at straws to get funding. It has nothing to do and it is not a solution long-term. It will, because the issue, the structural issue of CLTC not being able to do their job properly is, remains the same. We are putting, we're sweeping dirt under the carpet and pretending nothing is happening. The problem remains the same. At the same time, if you look at CLTC, one of the major issue that you can see all over De 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 Do is illegal use of CLTC land by trespassers who use those lands as shop shop where you have high concentration of toxic materials. And I'm not even talking about the illegal removal of identification numbers on cars and so on. The neighborhood is very strongly against the change from golf club to solar farm for many reasons. And people have voiced many concerns about what's going to be done there, how it's going to be done, what kind of warranty the neighbors are going to have. And right now, we're, we're getting a total blank. Now, I heard the golf arguments, I heard the other ones. As a background, I was an executive in the hospitality industry for over thirty years. I did my undergraduate studies in international hotel management with a minor in project development. And I can tell you one thing, as a neighbor of the golf club, trying to go and play there is very difficult. This is probably the worst customer service I've ever experienced in my career. And so to blame the pandemic for the lack of service and concern that you show for your customers, which always creates customers not returning to your, to your business, you have the main issue there. It is not the fact that you're going to have a solar farm. The solar farm, I'm telling you, in De De Do right now, this is an election year. It's going to be a huge issue for electors coming this season. And I will remind you, since we're on a And I will remind you, since we're on an election year, the fate of the One Pat Ten a few years back. Because this is what you're facing if you approving this project. People are already upset. They have not been talked to. They have not been consulted. And beside the golfers, there are thousands of people around the golf course that are not happy just because they have not been asked. And on top of it, any of the issues they are worried about is not being addressed. So I would strongly recommend that you look at this much more in detail, get more input from the neighbors, and try to see, in the end, pass the, the emotional issues that we've heard, that this is a really serious issue. We can put solar panels a lot of places. You don't need to destroy an existing jewel in the middle of De De Do. What we will have if we have a, a solar area is an industrial lack neighborhood, type of neighborhood in neighborhoods that need renewal and that are suffering dearly from the lack of, of development. And so that's all what I had to say. Thank you very much, Siju Massey.
Siju Massey, Mr. Pierre. All right, so we have, um, David Herrera from the Chamois Land Trust Commission, Attorney Lee Miller from the Office of the Attorney General, Mr. Ronald Leguanyia, and Mr. Robert Celestio. Senators, do any of you have questions for GWA at this point? If not, we will let him go. GWA?
I guess it's a simple question in reference to, if someone made a statement that the solar is going to affect the aquifer? I mean, GWA, you can respond to that. It's a well you have. I don't know how that's going to affect it.
So, so there would be some concerns about the wellhead protection? I mean, if, if panels weren't to be maintained and cracked and chemicals would leak out into the, into the ground, that, that would be concerning. But as long as they are maintained and monitored and it's resolved quickly, um, shouldn't be an issue.
All right, thank you.
What about the clearing for it? The clearing or grading that might be necessary?
Well, I think there's a, a certain, um, area around each well that has to be free of, of certain things. So I know that during the permitting process, that would all be addressed.
All right, okay. Thank you, Mr. Uh, any other questions for Mr. Badasi? Otherwise, I'm going to let Mr. Badasi leave, please.
I just wanted to hear what Carlos had to say.
For Mr. Badasi, do you have any questions?
Well, he's responding to something that Mr. Badasi said, and I would like to hear what he had to say.
Is there any question for Mr. Badasi? Senator, is there any question for Mr. Badasi? Otherwise? Yeah, so Senator Brown has a question. We also have a meeting coming up, so.
With regards to the current testing, I mean, you're not the regulator. Guam PA is the regulator, and they're not here to answer. But with regards to the maintenance and operations of the golf course itself, have there been any monitoring wells or anything put in other than water quality testing of these wells to determine whether or not you have any contaminants from the golf course or any material that's been put on the golf course that could affect your water quality in your wells?
Yeah, so I do know that, that we do test in all of our, all of our water wells. As far as the results, I'm not, I don't have that information with me, but we can provide that.
Could you provide that to the committee? I mean, we would like to know. I mean, I'm sure you're required to do the water testing, but I'm sure, I would also want to know what follow-up has Guam PA done in reviewing those results? Because I'm sure you would have to submit it to them to make sure that water quality standards are being maintained at those wells. Thank you, thank you, members.
Thank you very much. Mr. Badasi, your excuse, thank you, Siju Massey. We will allow the, the senators to ask questions of the panel if the time permits. My, the issue we're facing right now is it's about 10:00 till 12:00, and we have a core meeting, a Committee on Rules meeting at 12:00. So I'm going to be faced with the, either continuing this or delaying the core. So, just a minute, I guess, um. Can we have Attorney Miller?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members. My name is Lee Miller. I'm an Assistant Attorney General. General Moylan asked me to come down this morning and share with you his perspective that, his disappointment that we are, if this proposal moves forward, we will be removing an accessible recreational opportunity that's available to the people of Guam, especially to the youth of Guam. I was in the audience earlier this week where many of the members of this committee participated in a robust discussion about the law enforcement challenges we face on Guam. And it's the Attorney General's perspective that one of the low-cost things we can do to mitigate some of those law enforcement challenges is to expand accessible recreational opportunities for the people of Guam, especially the, the youth of Guam. And so if we are going to, um, remove this accessible opportunity, it's our hope that we're going to spend some time and energy trying to identify new and more accessible recreational opportunities. With that, I'm, I'm finished and available for any questions.
All right, Siju Massey. Are there any questions for the Attorney General's office, senators? If not, your excuse is fine. All right, I know the CLTC has a meeting coming up. How would you like to proceed? See, Mr. Garrido, Commissioner Garrido, thank you for being here. This is, please introduce yourself.
First of all, I would like to yield my position to Ron Leguanyia. And if possible, I can go after him.
All right, well, we have a meeting coming up, so I'm asking because you have a meeting as well. It's up to you. So then, um, De Malago?
Okay, I, I'll start. Good afternoon or good morning. My name is Earl Garrido. I'm a commissioner with the Chamois Land Trust Board, but I'm here in my personal capacity. I see before me visionaries. I see both spectrums of the scale in front of me. And I thank you for taking the proper steps and trying to see us through the issues that we are, we are facing in the Land Trust. Now, I'm not here to grab headlines, nor am I here for office. I'm not running for office. I'm here in my personal capacity as a Gamanian, born and raised in Guam. Benchmark, back in 2003, the CCU was born and was effectualized, I believe it was December or January, December 2003 or January 2004, all right? Ever since the CCU's inception, the power rates have steadily increased by 2% to this day. They may change the terminology, terminology assigned to it, but it was an increase of at least 2% every year since their inception. Oil rates continue to soar. We have no control whatsoever with oil rates. That's OTEC that have the final say so in what oil is going to cost the common man. Oil rates will continue to soar and solar power isn't the answer to NO, but it is a stabilizing effort for power rates and power consumption. The numbers support the arguments in favor of solar farms because this, my, the, the numbers of ratepayers versus the minute number of golfers doesn't balance out evenly. As far as their rear's, uh, situation with the Guam International Golf Course, it was under Pika Farren's, uh, uh, time that there was a promissory note that was formulated and agreed to by both the CLTC at that time and also the country club. Mr. Camacho here made reference to, uh, a board member putting the country club under probation status. That was me. All right, I'll, I'll admit to that. I openly cautioned them that if they were late, that we would terminate the lease. But they have been very true to their word that they will adhere to the promissory note conditions and terms. Mr. Shelly pointed out that there are 1,000 golfers in Guam that would benefit by maintaining the golf course in its status. I believe there's at least 75,000 to 100,000 ratepayers in the island, and they would be more, they would benefit more if a solar farm was put in to help maintain and decrease production costs with GPA. So in my mind, I was evaluating ratepayers versus golfers. The numbers don't work out in favor of the golfers, I'm sad to say, but 1,000 versus 75,000 or maybe 100,000 ratepayers in the island because a ratepayer, I would consider a ratepayer head of a household. All right? And how many of the 1,000 golfers are head of a household? But everybody would benefit from lower power rates. And that's, that's the way I see the situation that is being brought to the table. So I do stand in support of Bill 179-37. And I hope that, uh, we can resolve this amicably because if it's true that you can build a solar farm anywhere, it's also true that you can build a golf course anywhere. And in previous conversations, it was stated that to get that golf course up to a working condition is going to cost at least $3 million. And if we were to go out and bid, let's say we cancel the, uh, the lease with the, the golf course, and we would go out to bid on it, I don't think we'll get anywhere as close to what we're receiving from the golf course on their present lease. So it's a number of economics. And, uh, part of their, part of their offer was to prepay everything for the balance of the lease plus the extension that would give an infusion to the, to the Chamois Land Trust of at least couple million dollars that we can, in turn, infuse into building infrastructure for the Chamois Land Trust tenants. So, yes, I do stand in support of it. I, I'm not long in talking, but I do think things out before I take a position, and that's my position. I do support your bill, and I hope we can see it made to come to fruition and we see it as a law that will help us in turn help our tenants. Thank you.
Siju Massey, Commissioner Garrido.
Siju Massey, okay.
All right, Commissioner Garrido, I mean, Commissioner Herrera, we're going to take you now because of your meeting at 1:00.
Don't worry, don't worry, Siju Massey. In honor of the bid, Bobalta Herrera, Commissioner Zogi, Chamois Land Trust Commission. If you know English, say "Bula" or "Mangai" to me. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker and Senators. My name is David Bobalta Herrera. I am a commissioner for the Chamois Land Trust Commission since 2022. I would like for the record that I am in favor of Bill Number 17937, an act to amend the Chamois Land Trust lease agreement with the Guam International Country Club Incorporated. And I would like just to state for the record that I do have respect for the golfers. I am a golfer myself, and I, uh, I have played down at the GICC and the other golf courses. But my reason for my basis for supporting this bill is that for economic reason. My economic perspective is that the wants versus needs. Do I want to play golf? Yes. Do I need to play golf? No. Then we compare the economic condition with the 1,000 golfers in comparison and contrast to the 40,000 customers from GPA and the 10,000 applicants that are waiting to get Land Trust properties and the 2,900 lessees that are waiting for the infrastructure to come in. Now, what is the economic leverage and benefit with this operation? When we get this infusion of, uh, that amount of cash flow that was preestimated, that amount of funds would be leveraged in multiple, uh, functions with the, uh, operation, with the USDA Suda operation. So that would complete my testimony because we have a short, uh, meeting, and we're meeting at 1:00 with the Chamois Land Trust Commission. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Miss, Commissioner Herrera. I very much appreciate your input and, um, all right. Mr. For who? Are you able to state, well, we hear the last two testimony? Okay, so Mr. Leguanyia.
Siju Massey. I'm going to represent the government. I support the commission. I'm not going to argue. I'm going to say 17937. I'm going to say. 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 Sa gua salapi esti, zudu esti para i man ta otta kumu ma prebas ti. Gua salapi ni hagas tima mapapasino xa idibinyia. Bastay ne sti dibi. Ta chuli edzuna salapi, da ta adzuda iman ta otta mana gua hanum niya, electricity niya, zo u vanyoga, sofuzan pos para i man ta otta. Iman chamoru. Tima onyano pabe saongan. Pabe itacu para iman ta otta. Sa edza na perofan kwalifica ji dees mid kumu haga chamoru au. Bas tumatazuzu para iman chamoru. Ti para estisha ni mgefsaka gi ni na pofan recreational. Otro, tamana na kuntutusisi sti kumpaleku kumu ma prebas ti. Estama angoku na para manav gua hasagan niya i komisyon i tanu manaina ta. Za pesa afreshiam na para unafana ono hami. Hami loki i Guam ancestral lands komisyon. Za sa atana ta zasta salapi manana yam gi ni legislatura. No senado jo? Ta zat salapi ma gi ni esti na fondo legislatura manana i ancestral lands. Gi ni hamya. Na inapapasino za tizau zu manasebi speaker untungwa edzo nakebli para iman ta otta. Para edzusya ni manuri na na duenu ni tipara u matuli tati na i tanu niya. Bas edzu nakobli ma timangasta ham. Kana hami inapapasino i gi ni mangai yam paugu i tsi sheti, sheti, shantu mid izon momi budget. Za edzu nakebli gi ni i rinikohin salapi para iman ta otta ni diputsi ufa manoi ni man sini matuli tanu niya tati. Bas timangasta hit kumu ma prebas ti. Estama afreshiam na para manoi yam ne zi lihingwi. Gua pet meninti uvisi nan momi za timangasta ham. Bas gua talu bu mayga kompono gi pari. Bulan komposinya ta atki la. Polo za ai klopo sa sa sangan. Polo za land management ufa napapasino loki. Sa hami napapasino land management atki le. Polo za sia loki paugu ufa napasi. Lumunga manafa napasi ancestral lands. Ya dobri hami. Esti na ehensha esti xa na komisyon. Olé na na atana. Senado senadosi klas. Esti na i komisyon i manaina ta na komisyon i manaina ta. Za ni manuri na na duenu dosi esti na komisyon. Esti otra esti na goga. Iman ta otta esti i zotta. Edzusya i bureau budget reno xa otusya na ehensha ti zotta nau. Esti i zotta. I chamoru i zotta esti. Bas debi ti ta hasu nau xa. Hasu iman ta otta ni mama madedeshi paugu. Manai gi pauguna momentu. Sa mangai gi za maspipia ilalaniya. Manahano mangogolu ma peppeska. Ma mpependi luluk. Ti manahano mangogolf. Bulan sta golf course. Za otro disti, disti tutonya esti na golf course. Hagasasakasagi dediduzu ma mbesino ma na odhu di sa prebas ti. Sa to duji i masot pinbineno ji pesticides gi. Mahano papagi hanum basi. Se lutap paugu gi na wow za ngi za gu. Fuma gogasi ga no si, si Bob Celestio sa spuput, tiya spuputisti. Bob obma gi edzuna honum. Ma hami na dosi obma gi apla sa honum. Swetina ma mama nu honum za ma nagogaska slo. Estigi manelu. Edzigi i na para ji i macho min pesticide. Edzi bineno gi edzu hagasadu sa prebas ti. Za moleknyasti za tanafangaikanditit. Mas make kandit electricity para to ri ta otta Guam. Lumutu mas edzi nwebi na midzon na salapi no pari. Edzu para u managuatalan sa gan honum sa gan taki za deestia electricity. Be ututa ga no sa utungwa na pofan unta lo. Manelu manauta Guam. Ita ni iman chamoru. Ben adzuda hamzupgi estina manera. Monu ni na sini. Angi ti sini mapasi dibinyia. Bas malaza taspiasti. Hadi sini manapasi. Esti xa ipara solar panel, solar farm sa gua, gua aprovetso gi ni na, na priniponi. Sidoos masi.
Sidoos masi, Mr. Laquana.
I was just checking if it's afternoon. Good afternoon, Speaker Tari and fellow senators. My name is Robert Namolik. Celestio Hungan, Chamoru otselo. Za nu golf gua izaho. I was at home watching TV with my wife, and I saw the legislature speaking about this issue. So I had to, I didn't plan on coming down, but I rushed all the way down here only for one reason. One reason is this. I have mixed emotions. I really believe that the Chamorro people should have their own home and should be afforded to be able to get on Chamorland Trust. I really believe, because I am on Chamorland Trust. But the mixed emotions I have is that the understanding that I have. In 1994, I was in San Diego. And rehabilitation through VA sent me to school with the San Diego Golf Academy. I had to prove myself as a golf pro to enter into the San Diego Golf Academy. And I graduated as a golf professional. And I worked in a golf course as a starter, as a greens helper, cleaned the carts, start from the bottom. Then I came to Guam and I worked at Admiral Nimitz, as some people remember, as the operations supervisor. Then I went to the States because my dad got sick, and I came back and I worked at Leo Palace as operations supervisor. I understand both sides. They need the money. This is a money issue on how to give money to Chamorland Trust in order to build infrastructures for the people of Guam. So we can't just blame the golf course for all its issues that, hey, you know, it's just sporting things, only rich people play golf. It's not true. You know, like the veteran I heard earlier said, this is not only for recreational, this is for, to help their mental state, to get out there, you know? Because a lot of veterans just stay at home. And when they do that, their illnesses gets worse. And as a golf professional, I understand the management issues. GICC at one time was beneficial and very productive and financially stable and was able to pay bills. Any golf course right now in Guam have income to provide for their employees, to run their golf course and, and make a profit. GICC has not done that. They have run this golf course to the ground. And it was mismanagement that caused them to be like that. As a golf professional, and if you get a good golf professional, good superintendent, and run that golf course the way it's supposed to be run, then you could pay the Chamorland Trust the right amount of money that it's supposed to be paying. That's how I saw it. I spoke to the Commissioner Herrera before, and I told him, I said, you probably didn't know this, but I'm a golf professional. I graduated. But when I came to Guam, there was no avenue to progress. And when I got my disability from the Army, from the VA, then I couldn't work anymore. So I gave it up. So I had to write to the United States Golf Association, and they gave me my amateur status back. But still in my heart, I am a golf professional. And I think that when you talk to experts, you have experts like Mr. Camacho, he talks about finances. You talk to Mr. Russell, he's an expert in agronomy. He's very good. Mr. Russell is very good. He could, he could make a golf course so pristine you don't want to play golf. You don't want to hit his grass. It's that, he's that good. Yeah. And so the reason I say I got mixed emotions, because I love my brothers in Chamorland Trust, and I love that we need to do something for the Chamorland Trust financially. But don't blame the golf course, don't blame the golfers. We didn't do anything to that. It was the management that really made this thing the way it is today. And for another company to come in and say, hey, let's use your land because you guys have messed up and run this thing to the ground, let's help the Chamorland Trust and then let's make a deal. That's how I see it. I'm not an expert in financial issues like Mr. Camacho, but I know how to run a golf course. And if you run it right, Senator, you could get the finances and pay the Chamorland Trust what to do to them. See, and that's why I'm caught in between. And that's why I say I have mixed emotions, because I understand what needs to be done and how to run a golf course and how to get the finances and the profits to get to where it's supposed to go. And if it wasn't for the mismanagement of whoever ran this golf course, run it to the ground and have somebody want to come in and, and make it even worse, that's why I'm here. I mean, I wasn't even planning on being here, but what I heard over the, over what was being said, I just wanted to share my expert advice, my expert opinion as a golf professional. So thank you and donkulunas sidoos masi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Celestio, for that. And I think it's a great way to end. I will allow those who were attending this hearing, the senators for the duration, to ask a few questions. I just have three questions, mostly for Chamorland Trust. First of all, I want everyone to know I invited GPA. They, they did not show. I also invited EPA, the Mayor of Dededo, Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association, BSP, Department of Ag. All right. So my first question is, if the lease, why, why couldn't another property of the Chamorland Trust that's not usable for residential leases, like, you know, it's just not usable, be used instead for the solar farm and lease that out like you do your regular commercial leases or, you know, bid it out? Has, did, did you consider that? Because I know you already passed a resolution today that Chamorland Trust revoked that resolution and said they're going to reconsider it again.
Yes, generally we did. We, at least what I did is that I did an analysis on 11,000 acres that we have. But then on the technical side component, to construct and configure a solar panel farm, and you have a power plant right at your lot line, that would have cut your cost about maybe 30 to 40%. So that's one consideration.
All right. So that, that's the difference between using another lot versus this lot is because of the proximity to the power plant?
Very true. And the topography of the property is almost basically about 2% to 5% slope, and the clearance have already been completed. So to construct that particular kind of project would be very, very feasible for that property to be, to reach its highest and best use.
I also heard in the news that GPA is looking to expand their Danden solar farm. There's a CLTC-owned property down there that they could lease out for that purpose. And I know that they've talked about how far that is from the, you know, the transmission, but that's a GPA issue. Yeah, your issue is to get, are you able to get the equivalent, is I guess what I'm asking, through another deal? Actually, I don't even need an answer. I want you to consider that and we'll, we can talk about it. But what, why, and why, Mr. Gareto, did you say that the CLTC cannot get the same rent if they bid, if they terminated this lease and rebid it out? Why do you say that?
Well, the current rent that the Guam International Country Club is paying to the CLTC is 20 or, 20 or 2,200 a month. 20,200 a month or 22,000 a month. I don't think anybody that wants to get that golf course up to par is going afoot like a $3 million expense on top and then be able to pay that much on a monthly basis.
But does the Chamorland Trust have anything to, as a basis for that opinion, I guess? Like, had they issued a request for interest or any RFP that we might know any of that?
No, because currently we still have a lease with the golf course.
Have, have they proposed to, in, in lieu of terminating the lease for default or something? I guess they're not in default anymore, but to just restructure it so that the payments are made, I guess, which one is the advanced payments to invest and get the interest from? Something like that?
Okay, during Pika Farren's time, she negotiated a promissory note settlement with the golf course. And they negotiated over a fixed number of years to pay up all the arrears. All right? That was still in effect when this new board came into place. The golf course people came to us on our, on our monthly meeting, and they wanted to get the motion back in for the P note, because the P note was not started yet. It was just agreed to, it was signed, but they had not began the transaction. So they came before us and we discussed it in our board meeting, and that's when I told them that if they were to fall into arrears, that we would terminate their lease.
All right. Joey, Chamorland Trust, can you please tell us exactly the status of this lease? Are they current? Are they not? What is it?
Currently, the GICC is complying with their payment arrangement, although their arrears, they still have an arrears balance, but they're complying with the payment arrangement.
Is the payment arrangement different than the promissory note?
The payment arrangement was just recently approved prior to the Commissioner Gareto coming on board. So it is different.
All right. But that's what they're held to right now, is a written payment arrangement?
It was agreed upon both parties.
Okay. And they're current?
They're complying with their payment arrangement.
Okay. And the other thing, yeah, I just want everyone who's listening to know, so the, the lease for this golf course was actually a legislative mandate. It was not necessarily, well, it was separated from the trust for that purpose back then. Like similar legislation? Someone pointed to the Raceway similar. Okay. Is that right?
Correct.
All right. Okay. Senator Titegri, did you have questions for the, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gareto?
To support the reasoning why I said it would not be feasible for somebody to step in and jump into that place, if we're going to follow our mandate for commercial leases, it has to be 10% of the appraised value of the property. And a developed golf course like that, although it's not really in functioning condition, I'm speculating that the monthly rental might be something like 40,000 a month. And I don't see anybody who would be willing to step up.
Are you saying it's worth more than what the current lease is?
The current lease was mandated by the legislature.
Do you have any of that information?
We don't have any accurate information to determine the value of the property. What we do use is the DRTSS value. Although if a potential SE, for example, we put that property out for bid, whoever would be the successful bidder would have to obtain two appraisal reports. From that, we take From that, we take the average and then we present it to the board. So in our commercial rules and regs, the board is not allowed to assess a rent, an annual rent of less than 10%. It can go higher than that. In addition to that, there's escalation, there's participation rent that would be attached to that lease agreement.
All right. Thank you. Senator Taitikui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In fact, that's what I was going to bring up about the appraised value. If the lease were to end and have to go out for appraisal. But then again, you know, we want to make sure that any leases go out from the Chamor Land Trust is done fairly and assessed based on market value. So your increase in inflation should always be incorporated into these lease agreements. And sometimes they call it a sweet deal, you know, that was given way back, you know, Chamor Land Trust deals that were made. And that's what we want to stop, you know, these sweet deals that were given before. So, Mr. Grido, you hit on the nail when you were talking about the appraisal to 10%. And your assessment as to why, and just like one of the other speakers, Jerry Tay, who spoke, you know, very passionate about Chamor Land Trust and their responsibility. And as board members, you're responsible for the Chamor Land Trust, not the golfers. But you're responsible for the people of Guam and their lands being returned to them and giving them the opportunity to have a home. That, what, 10, 11,000 individuals, applicants on this island, 11,000? And only 2,900 has been given? With only 129 that actually built homes? Look at those numbers. And you talked about power, Mr. Grido, you know, how many ratepayers are out there? And I'm glad that Chamor Land Trust put that in mind. But I know that this resolution is not completed, you know. And I was always wondering, why are you in front of us, this legislature, this body, discussing something like this where the Chamor Land Trust should make those decisions? I mean, we put you as board members, you know, to make these decisions. And, you know, Robert, you mentioned earlier how, you know, you're like in the middle of this, trying to figure it out. Well, we have to take in consideration COVID. And look at the state of our island right now. Our population before COVID was 175. We're at 155 right now in our population. We're having a mass exodus of this island. Many businesses have shut down. Golf courses are expensive. I'm a golfer. I've had a hole-in-one, you know. I played golf for a long time. A lot of you guys can't say that, you golfers out there. But I've had a hole-in-one, CCP, bravo.
I've had four.
Oh, get out, really? Oh, did you hear that, Frank Gloss? He's had four, okay. Okay, you must have spent a lot of money in the clubhouse when you hit those hole-in-ones. So, because I had to pay, luckily, nobody was there when I, you know, a lot of people weren't there. But anyways, there are other courses on this island. You know, I've golfed all of them, even on military bases. There's quite a bit of courses here. And like I said, some of you guys wouldn't be sitting here if, I mean, like Carlos mentioned, if there was just one golf course or even two, he wouldn't be sitting here advocating for this. I understand. But the Chamor Land Trust has an obligation to the people, first and foremost. How long is the lease again for this? Joey, can you tell me how long the lease is for the municipal golf course before it ends?
It'll expire, the current lease will expire 2034.
2034? Wow, that's only 10 years from now, right?
Sorry.
Oh, 34, okay. And then it's going to be, then there's a request to extend it?
The current lease that is being, will expire 2039.
Okay.
With the bill, I believe it'll extend it another 15 years to make it a complete 30.
And in that 15 years of extension, is there any reassessment or appraisal that will be calculated to ensure that the property is valued correctly and?
I have to go back and read the bill. I don't remember.
Okay, well, that's important, you know, and here we are, okay. Carlos, go ahead.
If I could answer that question. The bill does have an MAI appraiser, which the commission will choose to reappraise the remaining additional 15 years, which we did submit a, instead of a 10% every five year, based on the statute, it went up at 20% more to 12%. But that's based on, you're right, that's based on the cash flow from the get-go, from the ground zero up with the escalation clause. Now, if this body wants to add a, appraise the remaining 15 years if it's extended so it can get the correct value, plus the remaining 2,039 that has already been paid, I don't, let me see, I don't see any problem if you guys want to get the new appraisal and the remaining 15 so you can get the correct valuation, plus the 2,039, then get the current value to date to 2,055. And then we can go with the net present value as stated in the law.
There's a lot of variables here that are not...
Yes, we don't, what's right now is based on the schedule of our rent that is due up to 2,055, I think it was about 13.8 million. If we went all the way through this stuff, but we wanted to do a net present value to prepay the rent if we do get the solar farm approved.
Okay, the other question I had, Carlos, you mentioned earlier about not being able, like, when speaker was asking about procurement, you know, with the GPA. So you're not guaranteed to get the contract with GPA, right?
We are getting, like, for example, the situation, like, if, I'm a housing developer.
Right.
If I need to build multifamily, I got to make sure my property is zone R2, right? So, or R1 or the case. In this case, we just need the authority to convert the golf course to a solar farm. But then we still got to go through the competitive process. And as this legislation is stating, if we don't win, it stays the golf course, so.
So what is a possibility, I guess it could be the owner of the course right now, in the event. I mean, we know that this solar farm is basically going to be a win-win, except for the golfers, right? It'll be a win-win for the golf course. They'll be able to catch up in their arrears. They'll be able to pay their bills. But the other one is, that being said, and then of course, you know, GPA, being able to help with, you know, the ratepayers, and of course, Chamor Land Trust making some more money. But what happens if you don't get this contract with the GPA? Will you be ending your lease, not being able to comply, or is there any plans after that?
I can foresee the situation, but one of the conditions that the commission made in their resolution, which I'm not sure, I guess they're going to amend it, I guess. But one of their conditions is that before they move forward, that all arrears, if this bill passes, will be paid current. So whatever that balance was, that they'll check with Joey and JCC, whatever the balance, that's one of the conditions.
Well, see, that, Carlos, that's what's kind of confusing. You're willing to pay up your arrears before you get a contract. Well, why can't you pay up your arrears now?
Well, the difference is when we get the property, where we think the competitive part is, as Commissioner Harris said, when we were diversifying the use for solar, we looked at many different variables. One, the topography of the land. Two is cleared. We may not be impacted in the biological survey, as you seen in any of the new clearing. I'll give you a good example, Simon Sanchez, remember that? When there was a delay because they found the snails in a certain part of the footprint of the school? So they had to stop and redo it. Well, the beauty about the solar, when we looked at the topography, the clearance, we know we're not going to hit any biological issue. That's number one. Number two, we know that, parallel to that property, is the substation. So our off-site utility costs won't be the same as the others, as the speaker said, Don Don or whatever. So we know we'll be competitive when we compete. Number three, what the guys, what the other solar farm didn't have was the Inflation Reduction Act that was passed in 2022 by Congress. As you all know, in the Inflation Reduction Act, it brought up the tax credit for solar farms in the U.S. and Guam to up to 50%. What that means is your cost of development will be subsidized by 50% by the tax credit. Now, these are all technical stuff that I'm only saying why we know we can be competitive if we get the proper authority.
Okay, that, it's still a bit confusing.
I know, sorry.
Because, you know, you're willing to pay, you know, the arrears upfront, even without getting the contract with GPA, and I don't understand.
No, that was one of the conditions that the commission made.
Okay, but you still have to come up with the money, even though if the bill were to pass and you don't have the contract. So it's kind of, you know, so that being said, I mean, there's a lot of variables here. And I'm just hoping the Chamor Land Trust Board will take in consideration the testimony from other people, like GPA, EPA, you know, to come forth and provide you some guidance, you know, to make a sound and educated, you know, decision on your resolution. Because I think this body is looking to Chamor Land Trust to allow. I don't like micromanaging areas unless there's some kind of shenanigans going on. And then I, you know, I'll step in. But right now, I think there's a lot of...
So speaking of the resolution, a couple of the conditions they brought up to was to make sure we use PFAS-free solar panels. Now, these are the new EPA, so it doesn't violate any of the Northern Water... So that is one of their conditions. And that's one thing we said we will follow.
I read the resolution. I had asked for a copy of it. And there's a couple of other things in here that need adjusting other than that. The timelines and that I was looking at it. Senator Brown and I were just glancing through real quick. But I'm glad that you took a pause a little bit, just to ensure that you're getting bang for your buck, you know, on this and that your responsibility is to the people of Guam. So that being said, I appreciate everybody who came and testified. And especially, you know, I know it was really hard, you know, for Guam and GICC. I've golfed on your course many times and, you know, with COVID, that hit a lot of people, a lot of families on this island, many of them left because of it. So I'm glad you're still sticking around, you know, you're trying to find another way to stay afloat. So, you know, I can appreciate that, you know. But thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. And I'm sorry to rush everyone, but we're also out of time on the audio. We would have to recess and reset, but I'm going to allow Senator Brown to finish with questions as long as they'll keep us on the air. Please, Senator Brown.
Very much, Madam Speaker. I have to tell you, after listening to all this testimony, I'm not so clear with this proposal. I'm curious why you're pulling back a resolution that you're saying was not discussed according to this letter here to us, to the speaker. The board has yet to have the opportunity to discuss it, but yet we have a copy of a resolution.
No, no, sorry, Senator Brown. That's for the other bill, I'm pretty sure. This bill, they discussed, they have a resolution. The problem is, the resolution had the wrong number. So they have to take it back to the board and correct the number on the resolution, the bill number.
That concerned me as to why, you know, if they're going to go back and change it if they hadn't addressed it. I don't like the idea that they're offering you the clubhouse for your office and you're saying, oh, yes, we don't have to pay rent, so, yeah, we want this deal. Ethically, that's kind of questionable. I mean, we get offered, we get offered a lot of things. We get, trust me, there's a lot of things we can do with our power up here, but we don't take it. At least if you want to do the right thing, you don't take it. And if that's blinding your decision, I'm concerned. And I have friends at this table, too. And I have people that are not so much my friends, that have a different position, but I'm bothered by that. So please rethink that. I understand you're paying rent. I understand the challenges of that. But my goodness, they can offer us the sun and the moon. Do we sell out our principal because of it? The other factor here that concerns me is I don't see the residents of Dedido that are surrounding this community here today to testify. And I'm an advocate for maintaining quality of life in my neighborhood. We paid to have an attorney challenge the Guam Land Use Commission to maintain the quality of life that we have in Pago Bay. That's how much we value that. And I don't see those residents here. I don't see the mayor of the village. I don't see the municipal planning council coming saying, yay, we want this, or no, we don't. So I don't know what that thought is. But if it's the same company that was still running that golf course 15 years ago, when I was up at the University of Guam, when the Land Trust Commission tasked us to go in there and look at their commercial leases, this is the very same company that was in arrears then by several hundred thousand dollars. They were at the top of the list of debtors to the Land Trust Commission. So if all of a sudden now, with the request to put forth this solar farm, all of a sudden they're current because they want to continue this lease, why are you not canceling this lease? Why was this lease not canceled? And I understand our personal feelings that maybe nobody wants to come in. But I'll tell you, I was around when the golf courses were built. A number of them were built, including Menengen, 30-plus years ago. And the cost to build one is astronomical. Three to four million dollars is nothing. So I'm curious why the Land Trust has not canceled this lease agreement and gone out and put it on the market and find out if there's no interest. Maybe I can't afford it, but maybe somebody else out there can. And then you can come back and tell us, hey, we went out there, we did our market research, no bidder. So, hey, you know, this is our next best deal. Then I can say, fair is fair. But if you haven't done that and you're just going on your own feeling that nobody out there has this kind of money, you'd be surprised who the millionaires are here and who are not. So please take that into consideration. Yes, I want to make sure the Land Trust gets the infrastructure because we already know, as I mentioned earlier, Guam Water Works Authority is going out for an $800 million bond. And the ratepayers of Guam are going to be paying that $800 million. So when we get sold the idea, be it GPA, the gas companies, oh, if we do this, it's going to lower our rate. Well, we got rid of the tax on gas. Does that change the manipulation of the gas rates and what we're paying at the pump? We're going to be dealing with nothing but rate increases from Water Works in the next 18 years. And you mean to tell me, oh, GPA's rates are going to go down? I don't buy that story because I've seen the rates continue to go up in spite of that. So that's my concern. And I'll tell you, this doesn't look like a lie. This is not a clean, clear picture. And I'm not a golfer. Ain't going to sweat off me because, yeah, I like driving a golf cart, but I can live without it. And I'm no pro. So I'm not here to advocate for one side or the other. But this is not, this is not clear to me, this issue coming before us. You have an existing leasee that has not met their obligations for whatever reason. This is not just COVID. We sat down at the table with them 15 years ago and still, they were not current then. So I don't buy this. It's COVID, the reason why this particular operation is not in operation well now. And more importantly, I want to hear from the residents of Dedido that actually live there. What do they want? Unless you can guarantee to me that that solar panel ain't going to go flying in their neighborhood and hitting their house or their car or whatever in the next typhoon. Money is very motivating. It's very, oh, my God, it's so, oh, what can I do with it if I got it? Thank God it's not my God. Otherwise, there's a lot of bad things I could do with the capabilities and gift God has gave me. Please think about that carefully before you jump at the gun here. Because when they start, you know, when they start offering you all these goodies, approve this and you got the clubhouse, that's your office space. It's just unethical. It's unethical for them to made the offer. It's unethical for you to accept the offer. You can cancel that lease and take over that building if you want to. You don't need their permission to do it. Just cancel it if they're not in compliance. You got the legal ability to do that. So I'm not going to be labor, Madam Speaker. I understand the timelines and constraints and everything else that's backed up. But I'm not settled with this bill. Currently, I'm not comfortable supporting this bill. And I definitely want to hear more back from the residents that are surrounding this golf course as to what it is they want in their neighborhood. So with that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Again, thank you, Senator Joe. Would you like to close? All right. Again, thank you again to all my colleagues and to all of you who have presented testimony. There, we started really early this morning at 8:30, trying to make sure we don't run into all these conflicts. So I apologize, but I'm going to have to call this hearing now and try to resolve the questions another way, either through communications directly. So you're welcome to continue to submit testimony. All right, we're now going to call this hearing adjourned. The time is 12:45. Sidos massi. This hearing is adjourned.